And so today, Madam Clerk, do we have a call?
Yes, Mayor.
We're going to call the meeting to order and we'll have the pledge of allegiance and invocation by Commissioner Cessna.
Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under a and indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Please bow your heads. Dear heavenly Father, thank you for this great day that you provided us. We come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. We thank you for the recent rains and ask for more moisture to help nourish our lands. We pray that you watch over and protect our first responders as well as our men and women in uniform who are protecting our nation. In this we pray, amen.
So again, I know you've had a chance to review the pack and then so if there are no corrections or additions, we'll go ahead and have the minutes stand.
I just had one minor correction in the comments that I made. I misspoke and said August 14th for the primary. It should say August 4th is the primary. So everybody should go out on August 4th and vote.
Okay. So any other corrections or additions to the minutes? Okay, with that, go ahead and stand with that one correction. So now we have a public time for public comment. We are, we have about 30 minutes for this and again, remember that if you have a public comment, please come to the podium, state your name, and then also remember you have five minutes. So if there is anyone with public comment, we would invite you to come at this time. Seeing there we have them, we can go ahead and go on to the considerations of petitions, memorial, and remonstrances.
Mayor and Commissioners, item 6A, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a request from Aaron Stewart, Garden City Recreation Commission, under code section 6-35 and 6-133 to allow possession, consumption, and sale of cereal and malt beverages, alcoholic liquors during the siege 5K obstacle course on Saturday, August 15th, 2020, at 305, or 3502 North Campus Drive.
And this is what we've done before in the past?
Correct.
Is this their second, second time they're holding the siege?
I think they've held the siege for a few years. I think in the format that would require a request for cereal and malt beverages, this is either number two or number three time in doing that. And it's consistent, this request is consistent with the one at least last year, if not the year before as well.
Okay.
I make the motion we approve the request as submitted.
Do we have a second?
A second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Item 6B, the governing body is asked to consider and approve use of Lee Richardson Zoo, the service of beer and wine, and a fee reduction on July 26th, 2020, from 5:00 PM to 8:30 PM for a meet and greet for Dr. Roger Marshall for US Senate and Dr. William Bill Clifford for US House of Representatives.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
For those of you that remember, this event is going to be very similar to what I have previously requested that you all allow us to host at Lee Richardson Zoo, which is the Leadership Kansas Taste of Garden City. So this is very similar to that. They actually reached out and said, hey, we'd like to do something similar to this for Roger Marshall and Dr. Clifford. And they're essentially asking for three things from you all, and that is to close two hours early so that they can set up. The zoo would normally close at 7:00 PM and this would allow it to close at 5:00 PM. The importance behind that is not necessarily that it takes a long time to do tables or things like that, but when you are serving alcohol, you don't want the general public in there while you're trying to set up those sorts of things because it becomes difficult to keep the two separate. The second item is to serve beer and wine for their event. And the third item is that you all reduce the fee, which is normally $1,500, to, down to $1,000 for this event. So you have the option to allow and approve all three, to deny all three, or really any combination of those three. And Rebecca Swender is here and she can answer any additional questions about their event or anything else that you'd like to know.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Yep.
Rebecca, would you like to say something? Thank you.
Jennifer explained it exactly.
She is really good, yeah. She's very good at it. Any questions?
The reason for the request of the reduction in the fee is...
Well, and we just thought it'd be worth asking. We were just looking for a couple hours of not asking really for much as far as staff assistance and whatnot, people coming in to set up and not, I think, as far as staff assistance, it would mostly be plugging and extension cord force ahead of time. And I think they're going to leave one staff there just to kind of monitor the door, so.
So for cleaning and everything, is it the duty of the party?
No, I know the zoo staff stays until everyone is gone, is that correct?
Will they all stay?
I think so. I think that's correct, isn't it, Jennifer? Until...
So we will. We'll have one administrative staff will need to stay at the Fennep Center in order for people to come in and come out, but then we'll also have to keep keepers on staff that evening to, they actually can't leave the facility until we have all people out just because if something were to happen, we can't have people in the zoo without an animal keeper there who knows what to do. So we'll have them. And then one maintenance person is also required to stay on because if for some reason now, I'm not saying that that would be an issue at this event, but we do have events where they don't empty trashes and they don't take care of things and then zoo staff needs to clean up afterwards. And so we do keep one maintenance person on for those purposes. The only other things that do take place ahead of the event is we do put in about 35 hours of staff time for like manicuring the area because we want it to look really great when someone comes to have an event. So they take some extra special care a couple days ahead of that particular event, whatever it may be. And it works out to be like 34.68 hours ahead of that event. So those are the only other things that I can account for at this time.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Would they consider doing like a $500 deposit, like just a refundable deposit, just in case something like that does happen as far as just cleaning up afterward? I mean, you would still get the $1,000 fee, but then, you know, if you didn't clean up after that, the $500 would go back.
Well, I'd hate to, I'd hate to start setting policy.
You'll set a precedent, yeah.
I don't want to start setting policy on where we haven't done that before, from what I, that's nothing we've done before. So I'd hate to start doing something like that.
Well, I'd like to offer a motion that we allow you to close the two hours early and then again, allow the beer and wine to be served. So do we have a second?
I'll second.
And the $1,000 fee, or reducing?
No, not reducing the fee. Yeah, I think that sets a precedent that, I mean, so it's been moved and seconded and now we can have some discussion. I think that would set a precedent and I think that there are people on staff and I, we're excited about people using our zoo. I really appreciate the opportunity that we can offer that and so with that, any other discussion or? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, we're looking forward to the event.
Item 7A, Police Chief Utes and Fire Chief Beatty will present the 2020 firework violations report.
Good afternoon, Mayor.
Hello, Chief.
The chiefs are here, in the house.
I'm one of the Kansas City Chiefs.
Uh-oh.
Today, Chief Beatty and I are here to present on activities during the discharge of fireworks from June 27th to July 5th. We found, as we have in years past, that visibility and education has always been a key success to make sure the discharge fireworks is done in the state manner as possible. During the week of June 27th to July 5th, the firefighters and police officers were very visible in our community. More so on the 3rd, where the fire department was out and the officers were out in the evening time. And on the 4th, on the 3rd, I was even out and observing what was going on. And then on the 4th, the fire department had all three of the shifts out and the police department, once the traffic control, the fairgrounds concluded, utilized those resources out in the community to be visible. During this timeframe, we passed out a lot of education material, had a lot of dialogue with members of the community at the firework stands as well as at the fairgrounds and out in the public, we had a lot of interaction. During the education piece, we did a robust social media campaign from the city, the police department, the fire department. In our social media, we reached out to approximately 30,000 people and it generated over 1,000 reactions or comments by insurers. There was over 1,000 educational contacts and pamphlets that were handed out in the community. And later on in our presentation, we're going to talk about some things that Chief Beatty and I have discussed that we've identified that we can even do more so next year.
Great, thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners.
Hello.
So on this next slide, as you can see, the data from the last couple of years, this year we had 15 fire incidents that were directly attributed. We could, we knew the cause. Of those 15 fires, six of them were dumpster, trash can, receptacle fires. Six of them were vegetation fires. We did have one building fire and we assisted the police department on two incidents during that time. You'll see throughout the presentation, as you've seen in several of the years past, the timeframes when all this stuff took place. So Chief Utes and I will get into that as we go on. The property loss information for this year, as you can see, was $1,144 to trash receptacles and 800 of that, 1,944 was to structures. I believe one was a shed that caught fire. The trash receptacles are city-owned property. All of them that were involved were between the dumpsters you might have in front of your house or the bigger ones you would have at commercial buildings. That accounts for the numbers on that. And then as we move on, outside the city limits, but still in the area that your fire department responds to, we had nine incidents that were directly attributed. They were all vegetation fires, all nine of those. And the next section is something that I added for this year's presentation. These are incidents that were undetermined in cause, but were pretty darn sure that they were fireworks related. And as you can see in the city, there were five, $970 in damage and there were trash receptacles, dumpsters. The other ones were Garden City Township, another trash receptacle there, and then two in Holcombe. A dumpster was one of them and the other one was a house fire and that's why you see such a high number over there. Injuries this year, there were six injuries. Six of them were adults, I'm sorry, three of the six were adults, three of the six were minors. Of the six injuries, three of the incidents, the person was the one handling the fireworks or lighting them. The other three were, they were bystanders.
Chief, I was going to ask, are these numbers from the hospital or where? I was going to ask this earlier, but I forgot to. Where does that, those numbers come from?
I believe they come from the hospital. They have to be reported to the officer, the state fire marshal by the hospital, by any hospital or clinic. And so that there's a data stream that way.
Okay, thank you.
That's where it comes from. Now we move into, back to Chief Utes.
Thanks, Chief. I told you it's going to be a chief show.
That's good.
The next several slides are going to be on the, some data and times and dates of different reports of violations. The first two will be on this year, 2020, and the remaining will be 19 through 16. This data is, regards calls from the community as well as officer proactive enforcement, education efforts. When we get a call, by the time we respond there, we don't see the violation. We don't see the violation and if nobody signs a complaint, we turn it and use it as an education opportunity. And we've had, every one of our contacts in the community on our education was very positive and individuals did stop. Of the 83 calls that we documented, there were, seven of those 83 were actually not violations. There were actually reports of fireworks being shot off during the allotted timeframe. Of the 83 officer reports, 39 of those were proactive enforcement conducted by officers on the 3rd and 4th where they actually saw the fireworks being shot off in the area, would drive through the area and then locate the area and then go up and talk to individuals. I did several of those on the 3rd where, and they were very proactive to shut it down and we had great success in that area. And then the next slide is basically a heat map showing the locations of the reported fireworks violations. If you see a shadow around them, that means there's duplicate reports in that area. It may not be the same location, but it's in the area of that incident. And then the 2019, we had a total of 38 reported violations, 10 of which was proactive enforcement by law enforcement. And six of the 38 were violations reported that were in the timeframe. Next slide is another heat map of those 38 reported violations. And keep in mind too, the 4th this year was on a Saturday. The 4th in 2019 was on a Thursday. And then on 2018 map, we had 50 reported violations, two of which were officer initiated and six were those violations reported that were not violations. And then the next page is the heat map and that was in 18, it was on a Wednesday, July 4th. 2018 heat map there shows the different locations again where violations were reported. And we look at these maps every year to see if there's some areas we need to focus our enforcement. We shared it with the police department, fire department, sheriff's office, highway patrol. So everybody knew where the report violations had occurred over the years in the past. Okay, the next one, Matt, 2017, 86 reported violations, eight of which were, occurred during the allowable time for the fireworks to be discharged. And 13 of those were proactive enforcement by law enforcement. And July 4th on this, and 2017 was on a Tuesday. And the next slide is again, another heat map showing the different locations where the fireworks were discharged, of the reported violations. And then the next slide is 2016 data, 86 reported violations, 21 of which were reported during the allotted timeframe. 14 of those were proactive enforcement by law enforcement. And the next slide is the heat map of where all the violations were reported. And then the next slide is just a chart showing the total violations. The red being the total violations and the blue being those reported by law enforcement taking the proactive approach.
So Chief, I was going to ask you, so I know that fireworks have changed over time. Is there, has there some change in the law about the size or the scope or the sound of fireworks that's changed over, over time? I didn't know. I tried checking with the state, but no one really had an answer. So I didn't know if you, if in the state of Kansas that we've changed something as far as what you can, what's allowable to be sold or the size of those?
I don't know if it's a change from the past, but what you are allowed is hazard class 1.4G. It's listed under explosives. And essentially what that does is limit the size of mortars to three inches and below, or smaller. And really, other than bottle rockets being outlawed by state law, that's pretty much all there is to it. Anything that falls 1.4G or smaller is legal. Yeah, here's, this slide that you're looking at now is graphic representation of some of the information that I gave you earlier. This is by time, as I spoke about earlier. And as you can see, the biggest bulk of our fire incidents were between 10 and 10:30 PM, which if you think about it, that's right, when it gets dark, people like to start lighting their stuff off. Some of the ones earlier in the day, just depending on what people were lighting and what people were doing. I know as we were gearing up for the public fireworks display down at the fairgrounds along the riverbed, we had a fire, a brush fire in the middle of all of it, just before they started as it was getting dark. But other than that, you can see most of our stuff is later in the evening. The next several slides, and I'm not going to dwell on them, you've gotten these, these next five or six slides from each of the last several years as part of the previous presentations. There's still those times. And then we'll get into our next slide. We'll get down to slide after the year 2016. We talk about what Chief Utes brought up at the beginning of our presentation going forward. Fireworks education classes and videos and as well as the second bullet there, additional language from our flyers. Last several years, the flyers that we put out at the fireworks stands, the police officers carry and the sheriff's department carries them, we carry them in our fire apparatus and when we're out and about and we see people shooting out fireworks, we'll stop and talk to them. Hey, remember your fireworks safety, keep the kids back, et cetera, et cetera. We give them a flyer. It's been in Spanish and English for the last several years. We've already started looking into creating those documents and presentations in other languages to reach farther into our community and going forward from there.
And also on the education, we found that we can probably reach out to more folks, not only through our social media, but utilizing Channel 8, the schools district channel, and also East Kern Village has their own broadcast channels. So we're looking at maybe putting more information out. The flyer that Chief Beatty was talking about too, is very lengthy, so we're looking at shortening it so that we can hit the bullet points we need to rather than try and give a whole class on a piece of paper.
Great job. Chief, I have a question. So are the social media posts, are they in dual languages or more than one language also? Are they just in English or?
Just English.
Okay, so that might be a consideration also because I know social media really does, especially in this time that we've used it more and more, it really does make a difference.
Right. And we have a video, I think, Mayor.
Okay.
Is that correct? We don't hide the secret anymore. We have drones in the police department. We have, we have multiple drones. This is a drone video shortly after the display was completed on the, the city fireworks display was done on the 4th. It's about a minute and 42 seconds, shooting over by the fairgrounds into this, out towards the city, towards the north, northwest, northeast there. And that's before 10:30 that you're seeing another firework show. We don't get to see, if you're home, you're going to see a little bit of it. But this is some good drone, drone video that we, we got from one of our expensive videos that we were cautious on where we were going to fly. We want to make sure, we can fly up to 400 feet. We want to make sure we were not in range of any mortars or anything like that. But this, this is a good representation of what is actually going on in our community as far as fireworks.
Thank you. Any questions for the chiefs? Excellent presentation, thank you so much. I appreciate the education upfront, it really seems to be making a difference, so thank you.
Thanks, thank you.
Sorry, get back on track there. Item B is, 7B is a standard update from Cox Communications pursuant to their franchise agreement with the city. Items C through I are staff reports. If there are any questions on those staff reports, we would be happy to try to answer those. There are meetings of note tomorrow morning in, in the commission chambers. Finney County Economic Development Corporation Board will meet at 7:30 AM. And I think we're ready now for item 9A. That's the appropriation ordinance. And if you would like to approve that, the appropriate motion would be to approve appropriation ordinance number 2511-2020A.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve appropriation ordinance number 2511-2020A.
So we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
So it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you.
Item 10A, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a resolution establishing a date and time for a public hearing regarding a rural housing incentive district for the milestone addition. And if approved, this would be resolution 2853-2020. Melissa?
Afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners.
I have brought you the resolution to establish a date and time as set by the RHID statute
of the state, establishing the milestone addition RHID. The date and time proposed in the resolution are September 1st, 2020 at 1:30 PM. We did provide you a draft copy of the development plan and agreement as again, it's just preliminary, we're still working through some of those final details. And that will be approved at the time of the public hearing. The resolution is the second step the city commission needs to take to establish the RHID district for milestone addition. Milestone addition is located on North Route and Stone Streets, just east of the Northboro Development going up there now. This development will consist of eight lots in which the developer, Milestone Custom Homes LLC intends to build single-family, one-story homes. They will have basements and garages and fences. The alternatives before you, you may approve the attached resolution or you may not approve the attached resolution. Staff recommends alternative one, approve the attached resolution. There is no fiscal note at this time, the developer will run the project through private financing.
Do we have a motion?
I make a motion, we approve resolution 2853-2020.
So Commissioner Cessna, motions, do we have a second?
I'll second.
So Commissioner Ortiz, second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we're 1:27 and we do have a public hearing at 1:30, Matt. Do we have time for?
I believe we do. And if not, we'll stop the item we're on and then come back if that's right. Item 10B, the governing body is asked to consider and approve an ordinance issuing a 10-year telecommunications franchise agreement to PGB Fiber LLC from Ulysses, Kansas. If approved, it would be ordinance number 2869-2020. Mike?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
This ordinance, if you approve this, it would be an ordinance that would create a 10-year telecommunications franchise agreement with PGB Fiber LLC out of Ulysses, Kansas. And it's all be pursuant to the Kansas State statutes of what we have, what they have to go through to get the franchise and what all that entails. The fiber would connect with existing Pioneer Communications Fiber Optic Systems here in Garden City and they're looking to expand that. There's some maps attached in there, their preliminary routes. As a condition of the franchise ordinance, PGB franchise is required to obtain and be responsible for any necessary permit, license, certification, grant, registration, or any other authorization required by an appropriate governmental entity, including but not limited to the city, the Federal Communications Commission, FCC, or the Kansas Corporation Commission, known as the KCC. PGB Fiber, which shall provide city with copies of all the required permits and shall also comply with all applicable laws, state statutes, and ordinances. The authority to occupy the public right of way shall be granted in a completely neutral and non-discriminatory basis and not conflict with state and federal law. So you have just as much right to get in there if you approve this as anybody else that has a franchise. Like I said earlier, this franchise is be for a 10-year term and then automatically be renewed for an additional five-year term. Either party can terminate the agreement with a written 100-day, 180-day notification. The alternatives would be to approve the ordinance authorizing the franchise agreement to PGB Fiber LLC or not approve the ordinance. Staff recommends number one, authorize, pass the ordinance. And then as a fiscal note, PGB Fiber LLC will pay to the city of Garden City on a quarterly basis a sum equal to 5% of the gross receipts. And there again, as that's pursuant to state statutes, just like every other utility that has a franchise in Garden City. And be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Any questions? So we'll call for a motion?
I make a motion, we approve ordinance 2869-2020.
So we have Commissioner Cessna, motions, do we have a second?
A second.
So it's been moved by Commissioner Dick. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those, did you have something? Seeing none, then all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Thank you.
Motion carries, thank you.
Commissioners, it's now 1:30. Commissioners, it's now 1:30. And so if you don't mind, we'll jump on the agenda to 12A. This is a public hearing on the matter of the governing body, hearing questions, concerns, and comments from the public with regard to the proposed 2021 budget for the city of Garden City. And then, so the process would be the governing body, or the mayor would open the public hearing. You would receive comment from the public on the 2021 budget. At the conclusion of public comment, you would close the public hearing. The commission can then talk about the 2021 budget amongst yourselves. And if you arrive at the point where you're ready to adopt the 2021 budget, you can take that action today. You could also choose to take that action at a future meeting. Melinda and I are both available for questions if you, if you have them.
So with that, I'm gonna go ahead and open the public, the public meeting. So again, we're, the purpose of this public hearing is the, the hearing questions, concerns, or comments from the public in regards to the 2021 budget for the city of Garden City. So are there any public comment or any questions or concerns or comments from the public? And I also wanna make sure and check with Facebook also if there's anything like also, okay. So do we have any, any comments or questions from the commission as we're discussing? I know that we had a discussion last time and we adopted a flat.
Normally how that goes is you'd close the public hearing
Okay.
and then the commission would discuss after you closed the public hearing.
So we'll go ahead and we'll close the public hearing? So we'll close the public hearing? I get to use the gavel a lot today, so that's nice. So we'll close the public hearing. So commissioners, if we have any discussion?
I think the departments did a great job on, on meeting all the goals and expectations of the commission on the budget and keeping the mill levy flat for this coming year.
Yeah, I, I wanted to make a comment. I, I really appreciate that and that again, all the work that departments did and then, you know, really understanding the, the kind of year we're having this year. And I know they did a lot of hard work in looking at the things that was really needed and necessary and having a flat without any mill levy was, that's, that's a pretty amazing feat. And so I'm, I'm very excited about where we're at now. Any other comments or, or questions?
I still am, still in favor of having a token reduction of .1. That would put us in line with the mill rate from 2011, I believe, if we do a .1 reduction, which then would, we would have an overall flat mill rate for 10 years if we were to take that in. And budgetarily, I don't think it makes much difference at all that. But at a time like this where other communities might be struggling, it, it shows a positive movement in our, in our community. And that's something that we might be able to use to, to further our relationships with, with industrial and, and all the different groups that we have in, in town that keep on growing our tax base.
And I know in the past, Melinda, correct me if I'm wrong, if we approve the certificate as is, as presented, we can still come back and lower the mill levy. It's just, we can't raise it after we approve this, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, I think the action you took at the last meeting
Right.
was the one where, once you published the notice, so this notice was published for this public hearing. You can make changes to this today, but the next action taken by the governing body would be an adoption of a 2021 budget, the budget's set at that point. You can take, you can make adjustments now, they just can't have a impact to that, an impact that would result in additional property tax being requested. And we would say if the adjustments, if there aren't programmatic adjustments or like the types of service we're in or the service level that we deliver and they're kind of fine tuning a dollar amount or a property tax mill levy amount suggested, our strategy would be to adjust the, the two sales tax, well, maybe not two, we may divide it among four, but we would adjust the sales tax projections for 2020 and 2021 to, to accommodate the, whatever different number the commission needs to.
And I, I wanna acknowledge, I understand that there could be, I mean, understanding that, that lowering that could offer some additional incentive. I, I am not convinced that, you know, with, with COVID and some of the other things that we're really facing, that we really have seen the whole cycle of everything. And so having a flat mill levy to me seems prudent and at this time, and I mean, I, I was very happy to be able to keep it at that and not, not an increase because that was my concern. So I would, I would much rather us keep it flat and then hopefully we see those savings along the way. And I know that the staff and the city are really working hard to make sure we, we take care of every single dollar that comes into our, into our city and community, so. Any other further discussion?
I make a motion, we approve the certificate of budget as presented.
So Commissioner Sessna's made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
So Commissioner Dick seconds. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're ready to, we wanna go back in order. 10C, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a motor vehicle nuisance resolution. If approved, this would be resolution number 2854-2020. And it would abate a nuisance at 121 North Main Street. Carol?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
We do have a, a vehicle nuisance, motor vehicle nuisance at 121 North Main Street. Our code compliance officer has been in contact with the owner explaining the need to reduce this vehicle. It has been there. We've been in contact with them since January, kind of gone back and forth. We had given the owner a little bit of time. He was working through an insurance deal and at this point he said, just go ahead and do what you need to do. So here we are to ask that you approve the attached resolution. Your options are to approve it or to not approve it. Staff does recommend approval of the resolution.
Sounds like the owner's in agreement.
Yeah, that's right, yeah. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion, we approve resolution 2854-2020.
So Commissioner Sessna, Sessna, motions? Do we have, sorry, that was a little bit of a tongue twister.
That's okay.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
So Commissioner Oreller seconds. So any further discussion? I do wanna make note, Carol, I really appreciate the way that you reach out to the owners of both vehicles and property and are really working to bring, hopefully, you know, rectify the situation before it comes to us. And so I know it's a lot of work and I know there's a lot of steps you go through, but I just wanna acknowledge that we really appreciate that, so.
Thank you.
Any, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero.
Carol, you can stay there. The next item is, would abate a tree nuisance. If approved, it would be resolution 2855-2020. And the location of the tree nuisance is 903 Theron.
Okay, once again, Mayor Commissioners, we have been out to this property trying to get ahold of somebody there. There is a tree in the front yard that appears to be dead. We did have our Parks Department go out there and investigate the tree and they said, yeah, it needs to come down. We have been unable to get ahold of the owner. We've, we've tried knocking at the door, we've sent letters, they've been returned to us. So we've been unable to get ahold of them. Usually tree nuisance, we, we do get them resolved before we get to this point, but we have been unable to contact the owner. So we are here to present a resolution to abate this situation. Your options are to approve the resolution or not to approve the resolution and staff recommends approval.
So do we have a motion?
Is there, I just like that, is there one tree or two?
There's, there's, the second one, the one the closest to the left on the screen, that's the, the one that.
The one that's closest to the garage, is that the one that's?
No, the, or the bigger one.
No, the one that the mouse is on, that's the, that's the issue tree. The other one had, is dying, but it's not dead yet.
So this is my first tree abatement. So do we go in then, if it's approved, do they go in and they cut down the tree and then the cost is passed on to the owner?
Correct.
I just wanted to make sure, I, I read that correctly.
Yeah, we, we follow the same abatement procedures that we do with, with most nuisances.
Do we have a motion?
I move to approve resolution number 2855-2020.
Commissioner Oreller moves to approve. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
So Commissioner Ortiz, second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you, Carol.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Item 11A, the governing body is asked to consider reopening the RFP process for architectural services at 310 North Seventh Street. And I think Sophia is.
Jennifer.
And I do wanna make note, just for the public, that Commissioner Ortiz has left the bench, so.
Mayor and Commissioners, I come before you this afternoon, kind of with hat in hand to say that I apologize, the last time that I was before you and announced that we were gonna open this RFP, which would have been on your first meeting in July, I did not have that RFP posted to our website, which does not clearly meet the notification requirements of an RFP for the city of Garden City. And therefore, I am asking that we are able to reopen that today and then move forward in the same period of time. We will put it on our website and then also notify any local architects who we know of that might be interested. It wouldn't run any longer than what we previously had it and then the idea is any responses we received would come before you on August 4th. Now you, as a commission, can decide otherwise if you want to bypass those notification requirements and you wanna see what we received during the first period, you can also choose that route and have me bring those before you on August 4th.
I make a motion, we reopen the RFP process as presented.
So it's been moved? Do we have a second?
A second.
So Commissioner Dick seconds. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you, Jennifer.
Thanks, Jennifer.
Mayor and Commissioners, item 11B is going to have someone representing the city of Garden City joining us by phone. And so we would ask that we take a break for five minutes and then start the meeting back up. That would give us time to bring in the phone and get the, get the person lined up and have it to be where to their input could, could be picked up by the microphone and be part of the public discussion.
So if we, if we start at 1:47, Matt, is that, would that work?
That works.
Okay. So we'll, we'll recess until, for five minutes for, until 1:47 and we'll come back and take up item 9B. No, 11B, sorry.
Okay.
Oh, is it?
Yeah.
Okay. And then we're doing it here?
Yes.
Hi, Michael.
How are you, really?
I'm doing well, thank you. Good to see you.
Good to see you, too.
Yeah. Well, I, I try to be in the, the.
Go ahead and reconvene, so. Mike?
Yes, good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. First thing I wanna do is make sure that, and introduce Andrew Schulte. He's on the phone. He's Special Electric Utility Counsel from Paulsonelli Firm. And you can hear us okay, Andrew?
Hi, yes, this is Andrew Schulte. I, I can hear you. It's, it's a little bit quiet, but I can hear you sufficiently.
Okay, I think when the discussion gets started, it will be a little bit clearer. So I'll go ahead and, and get started. Randy should be back, back in the, here in just a second. The item before you today is you're being asked to consider and approve the selection of an electric service provider for the newly annexed property that was in ordinance number 2852-2020. The background is the governing body was provided information on its April 21st, 2020 meeting. It's May 19th, 2020 meeting and the city commission meeting held on June 16th, 2020. You've received information from both the Wheaton Electric Cooperative Incorporated and city staff regarding the selection of electric service provider for that newly annexed property. The next step in this process is selecting an electric service provider is here today and legal staff will discuss the attached memo and the options available to the governing body at today's meeting. The alternatives that you have would be that at the end of this, so you choose, if you choose, you could, the governing body, considering the factors, could decide to grant the franchise to Wheaton Electric Cooperative Incorporated as the retail electric service provider for the annexed property. Or alternative number two, the governing body, considering the factors, can decide to designate the city electric department as the retail electric provider for the annexed property. Staff has no recommendation, that will come in the attached memo. And then just real quickly on the financial note, the financial impact of the decision, if any, is determined by the extent to which the property develops. A decision to have the city electric utility serve the property would mean that the city electric utility would assume the expenses associated with the infrastructure, the power and energy to supply. The city would also receive the revenue from the development of the new utility accounts. If the decision is to grant the franchise to Wheaton Electric, then the city would not have any expenses but would realize a revenue stream from the 5% franchise fee that would be assessed to Wheaton in this area. And with that, I think Randy's gonna take it from there, or was?
Right.
Okay.
Thank you. As, as Mr. Muirhead indicated, this is the next step in the process of determining a retail electric service provider for the annexed property. I think it's a Sunset Edition property. Wheaton indicated a desire to be granted a franchise to provide retail electric service to that property. Both parties, the city of Garden City and Wheatland Electric, were provided time at two hearings to present arguments and evidentiary evidence for your consideration as to each one of the factors set out in the state statute. And I think you're all aware of those factors and have reviewed what's been presented to you to date. So the next step in the process is for city staff, and that turned out to be the office of the city attorney and the special electric utility counsel Frank Caro and Andrew Schulte of the Paulsonelli Firm, to prepare proposed findings and conclusions. We do have a recommendation in those findings and conclusions, but for purposes of today's presentation, I'm not here to argue on behalf of the city, because that's ultimately your decision as the fact finder and the ultimate decider in this case. I do think when I finish making comments, Mr. Schulte has a point of clarification on one of the factors. It's not new evidence, and I think in fact it was something discussed at one of the hearings, but staff would like for Andrew to clarify that point at some point later on in the presentation. Mr. Muirhead's memo set out the two alternatives available to you, either to grant a franchise to Wheatland Electric Cooperative, Inc., or to determine that the city of Garden City's electric utility should provide the retail service to the annexed property. Those are your two decisions. In the alternatives, in the memorandum from myself and Andrew and Frank Caro, the recommendation of staff is set out in the conclusions, number one, and we're recommending that the city utility department be the retail electric service provider in the annexed property. But ultimately, that's your decision, and the statute has been drafted and determines and dictates that you have to make the final decision, staff cannot make that decision. I think at this point, I'll ask that Andrew address the one point that Mr. Muirhead and Mr. Allen wanted clarified, and then I'll proceed with something additional, so...
Thank you, Randy. This is Andrew Schulte with the Paulsonelli PC in Kansas City. And as Randy indicated, we assisted the city legal department with the drafting of the proposed findings which are required by statute. The city is required to produce a record of the findings on each factor and the basis for the city's selection. The proposal that is before you is a version that can be accepted by the city council or modified as you see fit. But the clarification we wanted to provide is that all city utilities pay a 5% franchise fee, and that includes the city's own utility department. The 5% fee for the city utility department is incorporated into the city's rates, into the electric rates. And so when comparing Garden City's rates with Wheatland's rates, we thought it appropriate to include the 5% in Wheatland's side of the table. And so i-if you have any questions about that issue or anything else, be happy to respond.
I'm seeing no questions or hearing any questions, Andrew. Thank you for that explanation. So at this point, your next step is for someone to make a motion, accepting or proposing either alternative one or alternative two. I would ask that when you make the motion, regardless of what the decision is, is that you also adopt the findings and conclusions in the memorandum that was prepared by city attorney and special electric utility counsel, because the governing body has to make specific findings and conclusions, and you can adopt what we prepared. However, if your determination is that you want to grant a franchise to Wheatland Electric, then you will need to make specific findings and conclusions that are different than what in our memorandum, because we have to make a record, so that's available to the public and also to Wheatland. So if there is any differentiation between what we proposed and what you ultimately decide in your motion and vote, you'll need to make different findings.
Thank you. Well, with that, I'd like to move that the governing body, considering the factors, can decide where designating the city of Garden City electric department as a retail electric provider for the annexed property, and adopt the findings and conclusions as presented in the memorandum.
Second.
So it's been moved and seconded. Now, I'm going to open it for discussion. I want to say thank you, it's, this is well done, I really appreciate, the conclusion was really well done at the end, and I appreciate Wheatland's being in our area, too, so... All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schulte.
Thank you.
We're going to hang up on him now.
Okay, thank you for accommodating me.
You're welcome, thank you.
Mayor and Commissioners, now on the agenda, we would skip over 12A because we've already done it, we're ready for item 12B. And this is a sub-presentation from Sheila Crane, who's the executive director of Downtown Vision, Inc., and she's going to provide a quarterly update to the city commission. Sheila, welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. This will be a rather brief update, you've got a lot on your agenda today, I promise.
Well, no, that's great, we're glad you're here.
But I just wanted to give you a couple of updates. The incentive without walls program, the city had put $29,000 towards that loan program. I just wanted to let you know, in pretty short order, $26,000 of that was loaned back out. And then additionally, during the COVID process, we did have another IWW loan that went out, and then another $6,000 in emergency loans. So the funds are still very, very useful, and they're still very, very active. Business news, the only closing that we've been made aware of so far is Gordmans, that is a national bankruptcy that has nothing to do with Kansas or Garden City specifically. The new businesses that have opened, J2 Scrubs was right about the time everything went down, Buffalo Plains Health, Queen Bee Salon, and Serenity Nails and Spa, all of those were under construction during COVID. So it was kind of exciting that there was still loans and businesses actively pursuing what they were trying to do during that time, so it was awesome. Resources, that's mostly what we have done for months, is be that resource. And we tried to provide weekly a list of things that were food for thought, actionable items, helps for all the businesses, where the pots of money were, where the incentives were, encouraging, very much encouraging the development of websites. That not only is important right now, but moving forward, many, many did that, which will help them tremendously moving forward. And then addressing recovery and, you know, what they could do in the meantime, and then that was followed up, of course, with Vinnie County Economic Development's guide that was industry-specific, so those two things went really well hand in hand. The timing of everything went really well, and I know the businesses were really appreciative of all of that. The next slide's not so pretty. So on the left is 2019, first and second quarters. Those numbers are 43,000 for both, literally first and second quarter are within like $92 of each other. For 2020, first quarter came right in there close, $42,065 in sales tax, so it was only down by about 1,000, which I thought was pretty good, all things considered. Second quarter, however, is where we saw the significant drop. So the actual number there is 28,550 in sales tax for the second quarter. May was actually reported by most businesses as a relatively good month, so I think most of that hit came in April. But anyway, that makes that down about 32% for that second quarter, so we'll see what happens here in the third quarter. Clearly, you know, all of our businesses were impacted. The next slide is a yay. So Downtown Vision has been recognized as a 2020 National Main Street Accredited Program. In a nutshell, it gives us access to things ahead of everyone else. There are layers of the program, being accredited is the highest recognition that you can be given as a Main Street program. So we get things like first shot at some grants, early access to grants, we get reduced fees for conferences, workshops at no fee or a lesser fee than would the others be. And I'm going to, I'm not going to read the whole thing, but I'm going to read just the first part, which is actually the press release from National Main Street themselves, because it kind of explains what that means exactly. Garden City Downtown Vision, Main Street, June 20th, 2020, has been designated as a 2020 Accredited Main Street America program. Accredited status is Main Street America's top tier of recognition and signifies a demonstrated commitment to comprehensive commercial district revitalization and a proven track record of successfully applying the Main Street approach. "We're proud to recognize this year's 860 nationally accredited Main Street America programs that have dedicated themselves to strengthening their communities," says Horsed, Patrice Frye, president and CEO of the National Main Street Center. "These accredited Main Street programs have proven to be powerful engines for revitalizing, for revitalization by sparking impressive economic returns and preserving the character of their communities. During these challenging times, these Main Street programs will be key in bringing economic vitality back to commercial districts and improving quality of life during the recovery process." The next paragraph just talks about overall numbers nationwide that is generated by Main Streets. Garden City's Downtown Vision's performance is evaluated by the Kansas Main Street Program, which works in partnership with Main Street America to identify the local programs that meet ten rigorous performance standards. Evaluation criteria determines the communities that are building comprehensive and sustainable revitalization efforts and includes standards such as fostering strong public-private partnerships, documenting programmatic progress, and actively work on preservation and revitalization. The last paragraph just reviews our stats from 2019, which was part of this accreditation process, which talks about our infrastructure numbers and jobs created and that sort of thing. So yay, we...
Congratulations. That's awesome.
There it is. So that's all I have for you today, unless you have questions about any of this or anything else from...
Well, I want to tell you, your newsletter, your online newsletter has, it is really just taken a step up. It's really well done, and I really enjoy getting that and you sending it out. And I also want to remind everybody that this weekend is the downtown...
Sidewalk sale.
Downtown sidewalk sale, and so there's some really great bargains, and so, and it's, I'll tell you, there's so much energy. Again, please use social distancing and masks, but I think it's going to be a really great time for everyone downtown this weekend, so...
Yes.
Sheila, thank you for the update, that's great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 12C, the governing body is asked to consider and approve reopening the bid process to sell two parcels of surplus city property located at 401 and 403 East Kansas Avenue, and I'll invite Sophia up to present this item.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Before you is a request for proposals for a surplus city property located at 401, 403 East Kansas Avenue, and this property was acquired by the city during the widening of Kansas Avenue project in 2017. Initially, there were two structures on this property that weren't in compliance with the current zoning regulations, so the properties were demolished, or the structures were demolished, and that then terminated the non-compliance status of the property. So after that project was completed, staff determined that the property could be developed to accommodate a commercial use compatible with the C2 general commercial district. And this RFP has actually been before the commission, twice before, the first time being in July of 2018. There was an RFP, we didn't get any responses, so the commission reopened the RFP in September of 2018 and received and accepted one bid with a purchase price of $20,000. And in that development agreement, it was outlined that the developer had to materially commence construction on the property within a year of purchasing it, and they decided not to develop the property, so they worked with city attorney Griselle to return the property back to the city. So staff is recommending that the commission reopen the RFP, and this time, the biggest difference would be that this process would last 90 days rather than the shorter amount of time as the first two RFPs. And that's in hopes that anyone who's interested would have enough time to prepare their material to be submitted. And once everything is submitted, or let me go over everything that needs to be in the bid packet. So we need the bidder's name, address, and preferred contact information, an offer of $100,000 or more, and a written explanation as to why the bid is less than $100,000, the character and type of development, the timeline to complete the development, type of financing for the development, any incentives that will be requested, any waivers that will be requested, bidder experience and... Yeah, bidder qualifications and experience, a time for closing, and any other relevant information. And that would all be due to the city attorney's office on October 20th. Developers would then present their plans to the commission at the November 3rd pre-meeting, and then the commission would be asked to make a decision on the developer on the November 17th regularly scheduled meeting. And then if all goes as planned and according to schedule, the commission will approve a developers' agreement on January 3rd of 2021. So that's what staff is recommending, but you can make amendments to that recommendation, or you can not approve an RFP and direct staff on how to move forward.
So Sophia, they can make a bid of less than $100,000, but if they do, then there has to be an accompanying written explanation of why they're offering less?
That's right.
Okay. I just want to make sure I understood that, okay? Any other questions or comments for this parcel? If not, I'll open for a motion.
I move that we approve the request of proposals as processed as outlined.
So Commissioner Dick moves, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Oreller seconds. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero.
Item 12D, the governing body is asked to consider and approve an interlocal agreement between Vinnie County and the city of Garden City for fiscal year 19 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Program. Chief?
Thanks, Matt. Good afternoon again. Last year, the police department was awarded a grant in the amount of $14,240 from the Edward, fiscal year 19 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant, also known as JAG. We applied for the funds for the purpose of emergency communications equipment, i.e. radios, just continue replacing our radios. In January 2020, we were notified that, from the Department of Justice, who requested that we get a signing and a local agreement between Vinnie County and the city of Garden City. Preparation of the agreement was delayed in the Kansas Governor's Grant Program Office, who administers the Byrne grant, and was closed due to the COVID-19 pandemic and executive orders issued by the Kansas Governor's Office. The program office has since resumed operations and staff has completed the agreement for both governing bodies to consider and approve. Yesterday, presented to the county commissioners who approved the interlocal agreement. It must be signed by both parties to complete the award, number 2019 DJBX0542, and if it's not signed, we don't get the funds.
All right, sir.
A similar grant, interlocal agreement, was presented last year to both governing bodies to execute a 2018 Byrne grant for a similar program, similar purpose and amount. So the alternative is to approve the and sign the interlocal agreement between the county and the city of Garden City, or reject the agreement between the county and the city agreement. Staff recommends alternative one, for the governing body to approve and sign the agreement between the Vinnie County and the city of Garden City, and there are no matching funds in this grant.
Any questions for Chief?
So in the, in the application...
So in the, in the application, it read that it was $24,000 for the equipment, so are we gonna use funds from the budget somewhere?
Yes.
To follow up? Okay.
And I thought it was a great discussion. Your presentation was very well received at the county commission yesterday. So I'll open that for a motion?
I move to approve and sign the interlocal agreement between Finy County and the City of Garden City.
So Commissioner Oreller moves. Do we have a second?
A second.
So it's been moved by Commissioner Dick. So, a second by Commissioner Dick, so all those in favor, or any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Mayor and Commissioners, for item 11E, we also need to get one of the parties on the phone. And so I would ask for a very short break, like three minutes, like a fill your coffee, fill your water type of break, but if we could, if we could take a quick recess.
So we'll begin at 2:15, so that gives us about four minutes.
Okay.
We'll begin at 2:15, man.
We're back in session, Mayor, is that right?
That's right.
Okay, this is again, item 12E. And this is the governing body's consideration approval of the guaranteed maximum price for bid package number one with a value of $7,980,609 as part of the Grand Rapids, Garden Rapids project at the big pool. And so I'll turn it over to Jennifer.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. So another pool item, and this one is pretty exciting. This is for bid package number one, which includes site demolition, earthwork, pool, slides, and play structure. So you see that that is for the $7,980,609. Just to give you a little bit of a background, when you all, some of you, were here in December and initially chose Concept C and we began to move forward on that, you essentially approved a project budget of $12.78 million. In June of this year, you authorized temporary notes in the amount of $14 million. That is not where the project was at, or that really didn't have anything to do necessarily with the dollar amount, other than it's slightly higher than where your budget was at in case you ran into some issues on that. What I will tell you is that we are still moving along on that $12.78 million budget. And this $7.98 million is just a portion of that. This is bid package one, and you will get an update today from McCowen Gordon and Confluence Design Team on where we are at in the design, what has changed since you initially approved that concept back in December to get us to a guaranteed maximum price. And then they're also going to talk to you a little bit about what's to come in the next few weeks regarding design and some other decisions that you'll have to make along the way as we get there. However, if we are able to get through today and there is an approval of this particular item, we will be talking very quickly about a groundbreaking ceremony that can take place so that McCowen Gordon can then move, move onto site and, and begin work. So with that, I am going to turn it over to Terry, and he's going to talk design and, and show you a cool video of the design, so.
Welcome back.
You might as well get you a place to live here, Terry. We can hook you up with an apartment.
Consider that. Consider that. I'm getting used to the drive. Although, I'll be honest, I missed the turnoff at Ellsworth today. Yeah, talking on the phone, driving is my crack. So I'm happy to be here today to talk to you about kind of the evolution of the design and then hopefully, you know, for you all to approve the GMP that McCowen Gordon will be sharing here in a little bit. Matt, can you pull up the site plan actually in the PowerPoint? Oh, sorry. No, that's fine. So that's okay.
Yep, that's right.
Yeah, so the, so the agenda there, I'm gonna talk design and then these guys are gonna talk cost. So to just kind of update you.
Yeah, give them their part.
They get to play their part. So as Jennifer said, you know, when we were here in December, you approved an initial design concept. We did a schematic design update virtually. And since then, the project has continued to evolve. And the way these projects work, when we presented our, or submitted our schematic design package to McCowen Gordon for some initial pricing, what we do is we try to do the sort of kitchen sink approach. Let's have everything priced that we can possibly do, and then we will work back. And that's part of the process, as these guys would attest to. That initially came in higher than we, than we wanted to be, or higher than you all wanted to be. So the design team said, okay, and construction team learned some ways to get that back down. I'm gonna talk with you about what's in the base package right now. And, and then we'll talk about, as we go on today, a couple of buy-up options that you, that you would have here in a couple of weeks. So essentially, the design has stayed intact, as you all saw previously. Renovation of the bathhouse, addition of a new ticketing and admin building just to the west of that. We had shown in the schematic design package the idea of this breezeway structure to connect the two. We still think that's a strong feature. It's currently being shown as an alternate, so for pricing purposes, that was something we said that would be a nice add if we can afford it. We're gonna continue to refine the architectural package, which will, those prices will come back before you later, so we can continue to find room for that, because we think it's an important addition to the project. Item number B, the concession area, that shaded sort of cafe seating. We've got a couple of spaces over there where you can rent out seating. Each of those sort of yellowish rectangles under that, under that letter B could fit up to maybe 30 people, depending upon how you can configure chairs and tables. You could combine them, so for a larger room. And then, you know, simply rope them off, chain them off, so that it's private, but still very open. And then if they're not rented, there's just open seating. And then north of that, in that corner by the concession area, at the northwest corner of, of the deck, is just open concession seating. And you'll see in some of the images, we've got an order window and a separate pickup window to try to keep the flow of traffic there a little bit better. Moving into, and I'm not necessarily following these in alphabetical order, but moving into, into the pool, you'll see item Q there is just some additional shade. I don't wanna talk about shade and how much we have. You can see there at the bottom, we're, you know, doubling what you have out there today. And that's something we've been able to increase with some, with some changes to the design that we're proposing. Item C is this large sun terrace, turf sun terrace. With some staff input, we've started to look at incorporating some birbing in there, so it's not just flat grass, but kind of have some stadium seating, if you will, and a place for, you know, I think kids get tired after the water after a while, and they can go over there, play in the grass, roll around, come back, wash off. I don't know. All of the yellow shapes that you're seeing are shade. We've still got the play feature, the, you know, letter D is that zero entry kids play pool. E is what's called socialization area, or social hangout space. It's that space that's in between the play area and in between the lazy river. It's a place where parents could hang out and watch kids, so they're, they're close by. It's also a place where teens can float in, come off the lazy river, talk about all the fun stuff they did on the slides, and then take off and go again. And we can talk about that in more detail if you, if you want, if you've got questions about that. Obviously, the lazy river's still in its, in its original location. Still the four slides that we're proposing in the space package. We've got a, a body slide, a covered body slide. That, item H, that will dump out into a run-up. And then I would be a tube slide, which will dump out into a plunge pool. And then you can float off of that, or through that plunge pool into the lazy river, if you want, or you can just walk out and go back and ride it again. I, item F up there is simply the tower, the slide towers. That's where all of our slides come off of the single, same single tower, a couple different elevations in that. You'll see in the renderings we have. And then item J is those, are those exciting fly high slides. We've got a four-foot and a six-foot, so that's the, the launch height of each of those. G is just the existing spray ground, not changing it, but we've got some money budgeted to do some upgrading. Trying to find, you know, some new apparatus that can freshen that up, so that it doesn't, you know, you put in something new, it makes the other room look even worse.
Yeah.
So you gotta repaint the walls. We're, we're gonna spend a little bit of money on that as well. And then the 50-meter pool. And then item M below that, to the south, is some spectator seating, some bleacher seats in there that would be rollaway. So when that's not in use, you could use that area for sun, you know, sun tanning or hanging out on the pool deck and watching friends. And then the dive, the dive well. And then item P is the mechanical building. So I want to talk about some things that are different. So the big thing that you may, you may notice is Ninja Course. So the Ninja Course was something that you all asked us to add to the project. We, it fit within the budget, we thought. When we got our initial round of pricing, the manufacturer, who had told us, here's what that, that would cost initially, that was in the 300, 350 range, 350,000 range. When we actually got pricing, it doubled. It was in the 600,000 range. We were not happy about that, obviously. McCowen Gordon did additional vetting. Water Tech and Doug did some additional vetting to figure out what, what happened. Essentially, what we learned and found out is that the first one they were building, when we initially got numbers from them, they learned as they were building it that it cost more than they originally thought. So that impacted when they were asked for that actual hard bid or early bid, what that number was. So we called a timeout, got, you know, Jennifer and other staff members on the phone, talked about how we can handle that, talked to the construction team. And what we do is notch them, because that pushed us out of budget again. We said, okay, well, what can we do in lieu of to maintain some excitement? Well, we've got those fly high slides. But one of the things that we weren't doing in the initial concept was a separate pulled-off dive well. So item L, where the dive well is, initially, we just had the dives inboard of the lap pool. But what that would require is you to operate the slides and the dives at different times. So you would be staging, say, an hour of slides, hour of dives, and back and forth. So what we're proposing is, with the money that, if we pulled the Ninja Course out, that put us back under budget, we could go ahead and add in that separate dive well within the budget. And, you know, then we also looked at what else can we provide? Shade was one of the number one things we heard, so we've been able to add more shade than what we were originally showing. And there are some other features that we can talk about in the future that you could potentially buy up to. Here, last week, the manufacturers of this Ninja Course made a last-ditch effort, sort of said, hey, can we reach out to people directly? We said, no, send us your proposal. They had a new proposal, magically it's down to $340,000. We don't feel real good about that number, I guess, and from our standpoint, I'll let these guys speak for themselves, but from a design standpoint, Doug's standpoint, we're not real excited about how that was handled. Could they do it for that amount? We don't know. Our concern is, they've gone up and back down. Do we get into a situation where we've got this thing half constructed? And we get crossways with them on price or something else? So at this point, our recommendation is, we would have loved to have been one of the first, but maybe the leading edge is not the place to be on that. So our recommendation would be put some of that money in other play value and other things the community said were important. Those fly high slides are still gonna be cool. Those are a very unique thing in a public facility like this. Another thing that we did as a design team that we're proposing for your consideration, we originally were showing a 10-lane 50-meter pool. We said, okay, if we turn down the square footage of water, that saves dollars. So we had McCowen Gordon price an eight-lane 50-meter pool. So that's what's in the package, base package, right now. We understand that, you know, it's important to have the long course swimming. We know that 50 meters is important. We felt like you could still practice crossport, but it's not a true 25-yard pool anymore. And we know that there are folks in the competitive swimming community in town that wanted that. But we felt like in the summer, that's maybe not as critical. But that's why we have Doug on the phone. He can speak to that if you've got questions about that. But that would be an option that could be brought back on the table in a couple of weeks, and McCowen can talk about that, that you could potentially buy up that back to the project. What we're showing you today is something that's in, in budget. We've got all the same program that we had before, except that Ninja Course. But we feel really good about what we do have in terms of the play value. We did pull up the, the input that we received from the public early on to see what other features could we potentially add. The critical things that, that need to move forward are related to pool, dives, things like that, because of the construction duration and manufacturing time. There are additional, what you might call bolt-on features. Zip lines were, were a big thing. There are some other features like that that we could add later, easier, that we can, we can potentially burn back to you to add on at that time, once we kind of get through fleshing out some of these other numbers. So there's some other buy-out, buy-up options you can do for play value that can still activate that 50-meter pool. And that's really what we were trying to do with the Ninja Course. That's really an overview of the site plan. I'm happy to answer questions if you have, otherwise I've got a few illustrations.
So Terry, is on the, on the diving boards, is there a high dive? Because I know that's something that people, we don't have now, but I mean, is there a high dive in the 250-meter or dive pool?
So we've got two one-meter boards and one three-meter. So yes, there's a high dive. Any other questions, otherwise?
The amount of shade, I, yeah, I think you've really strategically put it in really wise places.
We're gonna keep trying to figure out. And, and what we are showing, just maybe to clarify a little bit, over by the turf, sunning turf area, we're hopeful that we can repurpose the existing shade canopies that are by your concession area today, because they're large and they seem to be in fairly good condition. That's something we're hoping we can do, but we're gonna continue to work with the construction team to, to make sure that we're, we're adding shade if and wherever we can, because we know that's a priority. And not every day in July is 79 degrees in Garden City.
Those are rare.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So Matt, do you want to go ahead and, we've, we've put together a quick little one-minute video, kind of gives you an overview. And I'm anxious to keep refining this, so that when we come back, we're final design. So next, while he's doing that, next steps are refining architecture and developing our theming and interpretive package. So next, while he's doing that, next steps are refining architecture and developing our theming and interpretive package. So you can see kind of a view from up above, all the way around. You see the maintenance facility for the mechanical building in the foreground. Competitive pool with the shallow play area in the middle. So you've got dive depths on both ends for competitive swimming. You can see the concession shade area and that sort of ghosted-in canopy structure over the breezeway. We're still trying to keep that as a visual feature. And then the play pool, the social pool, lazy river, the plunge pool for that tube slide. Now you can see the lazy river as well. And one of the things that you haven't seen before, there will be other spray features and falls around the lazy river. And that's something that we'll be coming back, I think we have a meeting Thursday with staff, to start talking about what some of those final selections can be, to really add more excitement around the lazy river as well. So that gives you a snapshot of where we are today.
Thank you.
And happy to answer questions now, or if anything comes up, when McCann comes up as well.
Any questions for Terry or...
Thank you.
No, thanks.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Barry Schmidt with McCann Gordon Construction. Good to see you all again, it's been a couple of weeks. So we've all been working pretty hard with Terry here and his team to get this project to where it is today. So we're pretty excited about this. Matt, if you could pass forward to the estimate update slide.
Couple more.
There's a lot.
Perfect. Okay, so based on the features and all the plans that Terry's just presented to you, we believe that our total project estimate, or I should say, the construction cost for those features that we have today is $11,857,000 and some change. And that would include all these features that are listed below, and is in alignment with that bulleted list that Terry also presented. So this is just kind of a representation of it. This number includes all of bid package one, which is the site demo, earthwork, pools, slides, and the play structures. And then the balance of that is made up with the future bathhouse renovations and some other items that are still out there, yet to be designed. So as Terry mentioned, there's a couple of alternates or a couple of options that we're currently working on. And Matt, if you could go to the next slide for me. He mentioned a few of those. We're still working out just a few of the design items. These are still in concept, but we're still working on the pricing and hope to have those back to you at the next commission meeting on August 4th, I believe that date is. But that would be some pricing for an enhanced play structure. So this would be in the kiddie pool, the little younger area with just a larger play structure with a few more features, as well as this 25-yard with competition pool. This would allow the competition in the cross width of that competition pool. And then, as Terry also mentioned, the entrance breezeway. This is an option that would provide some sort of shade structure or some sort of feature between the new ticketing admin building and the existing bathhouse. So this is not an all-inclusive list. These are just a few of the options that we understand are some priorities, or could be something that you all would be interested in taking a look at the next time we get together.
So I have a couple of questions. So as far as that, so that's not going to affect the diving well, then? If you enlarge the competition pool, would that impact that at all?
Yeah, I defer to Terry on this one.
It won't affect it. It's still, essentially, the dive well depth is established by the clear zone of the slides.
Okay.
So we can do the 10-meter, the 10-lane pool. The dive well still works, you know, still function. So you still have both features open at the same time, even with the 10 lanes.
Quick question, Terry?
Yeah?
On the entry breezeway, you have it opaked out in the design. Is that what you're looking at for the design? Having it without a roof on it, just kind of like that?
The final design is not, or the design isn't finalized yet.
Oh, okay.
And that's part of why I say we're, we are finalizing the architectural package. We've got color schemes and things like that that we need to work through. And that feature in and of itself needs more attention.
Okay.
But that's part of what we would be looking at, is it could be roof, no roof? Do we want the shade or rain cover? Do we just want an architectural feature? You know, your two cents at this point would even help us, you know, if you have an opinion on that.
So Terry, you put in the, you said that the ninja course is out of the price range right now. But you talked a little bit about zip lines. Can those, like the housings be put in for future use? Or would that be something we just have to spend the dollars to tear up the...
So I can just talk a little bit, and then I'll let these guys, because we're getting into construction sequencing. But we have talked about that. And the features that we come back to you, as I understand, on the 4th are the ones that we would need to be able to get into that package, because foundations would need to be built, things like that. So zip lines, we've got to figure out what size scale of foundation or footing we might need. So if it's something like that, it's something we're going to bring to you sooner rather than later.
Did that answer your question on those features?
Yeah, as far as the shade, I mean, the open looks really nice, but we know that shades is really important. And I know that there are some, the building options, the top of that, was it tin or something? I can't remember what you said, the structure. When you initially proposed the breezeway, was the roof of a tin roof? Or was it a kind of a metal roof, or...
That was, I would say it was a color. There was no material identified, likely a metal of some sort. I, you know, I guess from a, and Doug, I'll let you chime in if I say something that you think, eh, maybe this could be done better. In my experience, what I would see at pools, and I mean, you've worked, you know, at this pool, but it doesn't necessarily have that covered breezeway. That breezeway tends to be a place where somebody goes when it starts raining, not necessarily somewhere they hang out for shade, because it's really not in the middle of all the fun. So I think if we want shade, we want it to be out by the pool for recreation. That feature, it provides a little cover if there's a rain or a storm or something like that. That's how I've seen those be used. But I wouldn't count on it being a shade element so much.
I appreciate that clarification.
I concur with that, Terry. You're absolutely right. That's someplace if it starts to rain a little bit, that you're waiting for your parents to pick you up in that area.
Okay. Any other questions on the future amenities? Again, we'll have pricing back on these at the next meeting. So if there's any other feedback that you care to share, we'd love to hear.
Questions from Christian? Thank you for staying in budget, that's great. It's important. It's very important, so.
It always hits. And if we could go to the next slide. So what we are asking of you all today is the consideration for the approval of bid package one. This slide here depicts kind of the breakdown of what is included in bid package one, what are the remaining scopes, the remaining parts of the project that have yet to be defined and designed to the point where we can put a firm number to those. And then the current overall cost, again, that current overall construction budget, construction cost that we're looking at is $11.857 million. So today, we are asking for approval of bid package one, which is the $7,980,609, that would include the demolition, earthwork, pool, slides, and the play structures. And then I'll kind of open up for questions. If we could run to the last page real quick, I just wanted to run through the schedule as we're kind of talking through the costs. I think this is important as well. So this should look familiar from where we were at a couple of weeks ago. Here we are today, bid package one, GMP approval today, hopefully, if you all concur with those costs, as we are ready to react very quickly on the earthwork and the demolition to get this project underway. As everybody's anxious, or the construction crews, they're anxious to get started, because it's a challenging project. So we're looking forward to getting started. And then bid package two, we're tentatively scheduled to come back here 9:1, with a couple of other touchpoints in between that. So any questions?
The only other question I have is, somebody asked me, how much of the, are you, how are you going to close off everything? Is it going to be closed? Because I know they were asking about the trails in front of the zoo, and I mean, in front of the pool and on the side. And I said, I don't, I was going to ask about how, what that's going to look like, or what the opportunity to see the progress. I know you're going to close off something.
Construction limits?
Right. Are you going to, like, the parking lot, is it going to be? Because I know it's kind of an off, people park there for the zoo when it's overflow, but I didn't know what you're going to close off, so.
Yeah, so the current plan is to encapsulate most of that site, which would include the parking lot. We do have some ceiling and pavement expansion areas that we have to do in that area, as well as covering the trail. The trail along Maple Street on the north side of the site would be included within our construction zone, as well as there's kind of a picnic shelter kind of on the northeast corner. That one just has close enough proximity to the job site. We felt it was important to have that one captured, as well as most of the site along the east, and then all the way to the street on the south. And I think that's Fennup Drive.
Okay, no, I appreciate that. Yeah, they were asking for clarification, I said I'd have to ask, I didn't.
Yeah. So we do take quite a bit of real estate when we do this process, just because there's a lot of earth that has to come out, and then it all has to go back in, as well as the pipes and structures.
A lot of concrete, yes.
Yep.
I make a motion, we approve bid project or package number one.
So Commissioner Sessner moves to approve bid package number one. That's hard to say too, today. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
So Commissioner Euler, seconds. Any further discussion?
I'd like to just discuss one thing for the bid package number two. So that would be mostly all of the construction for the building, the renovation of the pool house. So does that, some of that cost will affect your costs in the first, in this bid package, correct? I mean, if we decide to do something different?
Yeah, great question. So specifically, the items that were included in the future amenity options would have an effect on the costs that would be included in bid package one. But there is still availability that we can do that, as long as it's, you know, in accordance with the construction schedule. There could have some cost impacts in that avenue. But generally speaking, those costs are kind of standalone, would be really specific to the bathhouse renovations, concession area, and then some of that supporting pool decks and those things around the rest of the pool.
I just think it's pretty important to have the 10-lane pool, and so we can save some of that cost in the bid package number two, to move over to do that. I think that would be the best thing. So there's some ideas that I have as far as just, you know, maybe just kicking around, or you guys want to be kicking around with even the entryway, we talked about that. I don't know if that's a big, you know, it's not a usable material. I see the pool being more of a usable item, so just maybe do it away with that. That also affects the height of the new concessions. You don't really need that height if you, I mean, there's some cost savings there if you want to just continue that roof over that breezeway. But I didn't want to get into all of that. I know this is just for the bid package number one, for the pool equipment and the pool and things, so.
Yeah, so Commissioner Ortiz, we've talked through that a significant amount of time, and kind of how that's going to look. And what I'm going to do for you from a staff perspective is that, once we've identified all of the items that need to be decided by that August 4th meeting, and I have the buy-up numbers for those items, as you saw, the budget right now, as it sits, without the, that does not include the cover necessarily, you have about $31,000 in savings. What is that going to buy you? I don't know. But what I'll do ahead of that August 4th meeting is develop for you, much like what I gave you in December, which is here are what each of the buy-up options cost. If there's four, or there's five, or there's nine, or whatever there are, I'll show those to you, and then I'll show you what that looks like in the cost of your project, just like we did with everything else over the course of the rest of the things that you've done, and how that fits into your budget, and what would set you over, and how much it would set you over. You know, specifically, you're going to be looking at either keeping the current play structure in the children's area, or upgrading that. You're going to be looking at the 25-yard versus what it is currently, the 21-yard. You're going to be looking at the architectural features. And as you said, Commissioner Ortiz, those architectural features may not be as important, but there may be other things on that list in addition to the 25 yards that are important to you. So I will make sure that it is in a format that you can easily understand and easily follow and pick and choose like we did before, and give us really good direction and see how those affect our budget.
We appreciate that, thank you, Jennifer. So if there's no other discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
So we're excited.
Doug, thanks for joining by phone.
Go no goodbye.
It's hard coming on and off of the mute, it's exciting. Okay.
Item 12F, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a proposal for improvements to the city of Garden City wastewater treatment plant and selected sewer collection lift stations in the sewer collection system. Fred?
Good afternoon, Mayor and commissioners. Professional engineering consultants completed a comprehensive evaluation of the wastewater treatment plant in 2016. And they did an assessment of all the equipment and the conditions of the structures, electrical systems, mechanical systems that are involved at that facility. Additionally, we also did some analysis of the infrastructure we have in our collection system. And they identified several projects to be included in a bid package to update the wastewater treatment plant and selected lift stations. So the plan is to replace control panels at two lift stations, one on Lyle Avenue and the other one on Gibson Street. Be placing a new generation, emergency generation unit at the Pheasant Valley Lift Station. New generation for emergency backup to serve the administration building at the wastewater treatment plant. There are also probably the biggest part of the project, replacement of four anoxic mixers in the oxidation ditches. Part of that project also includes updating the electrical conduits and wiring to those mixers. And then we just have a number of concrete repairs that need to be done on the plant side as well, with the aeration basins, mixers, digesters, what have you. In addition to the base proposal, we had an add alternate item, which included some concrete repairs to four digesters that are no longer utilized in the plant process. Initially, we sent this out for bid. We visited about this a few meetings back. We had four prospective bidders. We were supposed to have the bid back on May 13th, and we found that we did not have any bids submitted for that project. Our advice to the governing body was to proceed with an RFP process. We sent RFP proposals out to the four plan holders, and that was due back to the city July 2nd. And we received a proposal back from Walters Morgan Construction Incorporated for consideration. We have several alternatives here to consider, and then I'll visit a little bit about the fiscal note, which is, I think, a little bit longer than normal, but it addresses some of the other things in the bond package. Alternative one is to accept the total base proposal, $949,000, and add alternate one, which is $107,000, as submitted by Walters Morgan Construction Incorporated, for a total project cost of $1,056,000. The second alternative is to accept the total base proposal and decline add alternate one, as submitted by Walters Morgan Construction, for a total project cost of $949,000. And then the third alternative is to reject the proposals as submitted by Walters Morgan Construction and direct our staff to find an alternate solution to perform the repairs at the wastewater treatment plant. We recommend alternative two, to accept the total base proposal and decline add alternate one, as submitted by Walters Morgan Construction, for a total project cost of $949,000. We will work with the contractor to negotiate elements of the proposal, if there are opportunities to reduce that overall cost. In 2018, the city commission authorized the combination of wastewater and capital improvement projects. And these projects, of which this proposal you have in front of you today as part of, was funded through the sale of a 10-year general obligation bond. They're held in the wastewater treatment plant bond fund. GL code is in your packet for reference. Some projects have already been completed, including the replacement of a 30-inch sanitary sewer interceptor, the Cherokee water main installation that was completed earlier this year, Southeast Community Park water and sewer... Southeast Community Park water and sewer extensions, a sewer extension on North Third Street to serve the Milestone subdivision and the twenty twenty water main replacement projects which are currently underway. Remaining unfinished projects aside from this agenda item include engineering and design of the sixteen inch water main extension from Maple Street to Jenny Barker. A pump station to support the above sixteen inch water line that will be located in the vicinity of the wastewater treatment plant. The Jenny Barker water line installation, which is part of the sales tax projects the city is working on. And the original estimate in twenty seventeen for the work included in this agenda item was approximately eight hundred thousand dollars. Now, in July, July first, the engineer's estimate, which was attached to your packet, with same work done. PEC prepared an estimate, opening and review of the responses to the most recent request for proposals. They came up with an estimate of nine hundred and five thousand dollars. While the proposal being considered by the commission from Walters Morgan Construction is more in line with the engineer's estimate. We believe that the full project cost, if that was the final cost of this project and if we're unable to lower that amount. We'll still have sufficient funds to complete the remaining projects that we intend to complete as part of that overall bond package. The current balance is two million six hundred and ninety two thousand seven hundred and ninety four dollars and thirty cents. And if the work reduces that balance by the proposed cost, we will have one million seven hundred and forty three thousand seven hundred and ninety four dollars and thirty cents remaining. That was a mouthful. And does the commission have any questions?
So I had a question concerning, so as far as I know this work is specialty work. And so is there whether not other other bids that people are willing to offer, or is this the one that you wanted, the one that came in?
Well, we did not receive any other proposals. I think some of the information we've received from our engineers is there are a limited number of contractors in this region. They're available to do this type of work and there are a number of projects currently underway. And so that was that was part of the issue. During the initial bid process, one of the issues was the timeframe of that initial bid package. No one felt like that was going to work within the scope of the other projects they had underway. And wastewater treatment plant work is, those are big projects and and they're a commitment to the contractor, I believe. When they're when they're underway, they have to be fully involved in that. And geographically and just due to the demands of the existing contracts, it's difficult for them to to break away to do that work. So did have a limited number of contractors interested in the project.
What's the timetable on this one? When would it start and anticipated completion? Do you know?
The start date is planned for late November. And then that work will probably take neighborhood of a year to complete.
I make a motion, we approve alternate number two and accept the total base proposal with decline. The add of alternate one as submitted by the construction company for a total project cost of nine hundred and forty nine thousand dollars.
So we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
So it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you.
Item twelve G, governing body is asked to consider and approve the acceptance of funds for the twenty 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 one Kansas Emergency Solution Grant through the Kansas Housing Resource Corporation. Melissa?
Thank you, Matt. Staff on behalf of the city of Garden City has been working with Marcy Smith of Catholic Charities in Southwest Kansas and Healing Knoll of Family Crisis Center to administer these funds under the Kansas Emergency Service Grant. This is administered by the Kansas Housing Resource Corporation and requires the city or a county to be the primary recipient of the grant. The USG program is designed to identify sheltered and unsheltered homeless persons, as well as those at risk of homelessness and provide the services necessary to help those persons quickly regain stability in permanent housing after experiencing a housing crisis and or homelessness. In twenty nineteen twenty twenty, the city was awarded fifty two thousand dollar, fifty two thousand four hundred and sixty one dollars. This year, KHRC has awarded funds to past recipients without having to go through an application process, which has been nice. And so for this grant cycle, the city and its sub recipients, Catholic Charities and Family Crisis Center were awarded ninety five thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars. The monies from this grant will specifically help to pay for housing for domestic violence victims, which is a top priority for one of our agencies and chronically homeless persons or families within Finney County. Specifically, both agencies are housed out of Garden City. The Neighborhood and Development Services has been administering this grant for the past two grant cycles. And we're willing to continue to administer the grant for the twenty 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 one grant cycle. We will receive four thousand five hundred and sixty dollars from the ninety five thousand seven hundred and sixty award to cover costs related to administering the grant. The alternatives before you are you may approve to accept funds for the twenty 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 one Emergency Service Grant on behalf of Catholic Charities in Southwest Kansas and the Family Crisis Center, or you may deny to accept funds. Staff recommends alternative one to approve acceptance of funds from the twenty 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 one Emergency Service Grant on behalf of Catholic Charities of Southwest Kansas and Family Crisis Note. And then the fiscal note just reflects that our department will recoup administrative costs allocated within the grant. And then we do have representatives from Family Crisis Center, Marcy, their new chief financial officer, and Marcy Smith. So if you have any questions.
Yep, would you like to say anything, Marcy? Do you?
I don't really need to. I thank you guys for looking at this every year. It is really a great thing for our community and it helps those that are experiencing homelessness in our community. The reason we have additional funds this year is because of the CARE Act, just so that's clear, I guess.
I really appreciate the work that both of these agencies do. Is there any other questions? If not, we'll open for motion.
Mayor, I move to approve to accept funds for the twenty 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 one Emergency Service Grant on behalf of Catholic Charities of Southwest Kansas and the Family Crisis Center.
So Commissioner Oiler has moved. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Go ahead. So Commissioner Ortiz second. So it's moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Item twelve H, the governing body is asked to consider a second amendment to the development agreement for Chapel Heights Third Edition to allow acceptance of the infrastructure without maintenance bonds and to allow an alternative payment type for the ten foot trailer. Have Carol come up and present this item?
Thank you, Matt. Okay, so to begin, I'd like to just explain that the adopted subdivision regulations that we have. They do require the infrastructure to be accepted by the city before a house can be started as far as, you know, building it on the lot. And in relation to the request today, a little bit of background. This development started in twenty eighteen. That's when the development agreement was approved, the RHAD was approved. And then they've been going through putting in their infrastructure. There they got to a point in the beginning of this year in January where they were really wanting to get the housing started. But their infrastructure was not yet complete. So they did get an amendment to allow them to put in the houses at the same time as as doing the infrastructure. However, we did make it clear when we talked to the developer that we wouldn't issue a certificate of occupancy until the infrastructure had been accepted by the city. So they got that amendment approved. That was in in January twenty first. And now today, they they would like to make an propose another amendment to the Chapel Heights Third Edition Development Agreement. And this, there's two parts to this request today. The first one is all subdivisions are are required when infrastructure is put in. And that includes streets, sewer, water, stormwater, any type of infrastructure that goes in. We do require a maintenance bond to last for one year to cover a hundred percent of the costs. So the first request the developer is asking for is that this this be waived, the requirement for maintenance bond. And the second request has to do with the original development agreement that talks about the sidewalk going in on Mary Street. Typically, this the developer would put in a five foot sidewalk. The city, in this case, looked at the area, felt it would be a great place to connect in with the city trail system. So we talked with the developer. We said, okay, you give us the money for the five foot sidewalk, we'll add in the rest and we'll put in a ten foot sidewalk. So the city was to install that. So in order for the developer to get the infrastructure accepted, he needed the maintenance bond and he also needed to pay this money for that five foot sidewalk. So what the developer is asking, instead of just giving the city a check, the developer is asking for him to be able to set up an escrow account to leave that money in the account. And when the city chooses to build the sidewalk, we can get the money from the escrow account to do that. Also, we'd like to put in a stipulation that says if the city doesn't put in a sidewalk within ten years, the money would go back to the developer. I do want to point out that the RHAD program does allow for a developer to receive a tax, like a tax refund, the money back from the taxes saved for maintenance bonds and sidewalk installation. So i- if the governing body would like to direct staff to write one of these amendments. We do want to make it clear that we would include some type of wording so that if they don't have to put in a get get a maintenance bond that they wouldn't be reimbursed for something that they didn't actually pay for. Same thing with the sidewalk. So we would work on that if you choose to have staff draft an amendment requesting those items. So at this point, at staff, we do not have an amendment to to show to you. We're basically asking you for direction. We have been in contact with the developer. We we do like to make sure the projects are moving, especially housing projects, very important for the city. So this is why we're here, because we kind of get to a point where these homes, there's nine homes actually that have been started. And there's two or three of them that are getting really close to being closed. So that's why we're here is so we can make sure that we're not holding any of these homes back. So so your alternatives today are to, the first alternative is to direct staff to create a second amendment that would waive the maintenance bond requirement from the subdivision regulations. And also allow the developer to open an escrow account for the for the money owed for the sidewalk along Mary Street for the city to put in the trail in the future. And then if that did not get put in by the city, that it would go back to the developer after ten years. The section, second option is for the amendment to address just the bond requirement. And then the third option is just to, that the amendment would address just the that ten year holding mechanism for the sidewalk trail going in on Mary Street. And then your last option is to to deny the request to bring forth a a second amendment to the Chapel Heights Edition, Third Edition Development Agreement. We do have representation. Mr. Bernard Chapel is the developer on record, but we do have his brother here, John, who is representing him. So if you have any additional questions for myself or for John, we're welcome to answer any questions.
So I have just a couple of questions now. Have we ever waived the maintenance bond before as the commission?
Not that I know of.
Has there ever been a maintenance bond issued in your city?
Yes, yes.
To which development?
We do have record of maintenance bonds issued for the North Borough subdivision and the Chapel Heights Second Edition.
The Second Edition does not have one.
We we do.
Have you been in contact with Keller?
But I guess what I'm looking, what my biggest deal about the whole thing is is that you require a bond from everybody who puts everything in. You require a bond from the guy who puts in the sewer. You require a bond that puts in the curb and gut. You require a bond that puts in the street. Everybody is required to have a bond, which is a one year bond. And then you're requiring us on top of that to do a maintenance bond. Which does exactly the same thing, which costs one percent of the deal or one percent or better, which is like on this project was thirteen thousand five hundred and some dollars. Which, you know, maybe that's not a big number like what we've been talking about in here, but it's a number. And that's our biggest deal is that we just, you know, we're trying to keep this development cost as least expensive as possible. And but yet, but we're double bonding it, you know, and in my talk, you know, if if you call an insurance company and ask them what this bond does. It's not, it doesn't do a whole lot. You know, basically, the structure totally has to fail. And which we've had great inspections. I gotta confess, the city staff has done a great job of doing inspections, getting out there, making sure that the sewers put in properly, the water put in properly. Compaction's good, deals like that, you know, where the street, you know, has seven inches of of, you know, of compaction deal. And then, well, I think it's six inches of compaction, seven inches of asphalt, which, you know, is almost highway specs on the deal. So, you know, so, you know, I guess my deal is it's, you know, it's money that we're just giving to an insurance company. You know, I admit, you know, I don't know, maybe the city feels like it protects them, but I don't know that it does. The deal on the sidewalk deal is is that, you know, Bernard, he was just saying, he says, if it doesn't get put in, I don't want to be charged for it. You know, that that's what that was all about, you know, if, you know, and I think Andy, well, I bet you it happens within the first four or five years. Just because that's developing quick enough, they've got the electric pole line all the way through there and everything like that. I anticipate that it happened. I don't know if it's gonna end up being asphalt or concrete, but but, you know, we don't have a problem with paying for it. It's just if it doesn't happen, we do have a problem with paying for it. We just don't think that that should just go into the coffers.
So so the escrow account, you would own the escrow account or the city?
Actually, it'd be in the city and Bernard's name, but basically, the city would have would have rights to it for ten years. I mean, so they they could pull a check out of that thing for ten years. And at the end of the ten years, it goes back to, well, actually to Chapel Heights.
There'd be an escrow agreement if that's what you decided to do. It's not just give us the money and we take it. In any public improvement projects, the city requires three different bonds. A performance bond, which which is a surety that guarantees that the contractor is going to do the work that we have contracted with the contractor to do. So that if the contractor doesn't put in the roads, the streets, we can look to the surety to have money to hire another contractor to go ahead and put the streets in. That's a performance bond. We have a payment bond so that if the contractor doesn't pay subcontractors, then that surety is there to go ahead and pay the subcontractor so that we don't have liens on a project, whether it's John's project or anyone else's. And then we have a maintenance bond, which I can tell you, we have looked at not only with this public entity, but with others. That if something happens with the project within that year period of time and the contractor says, I did everything right, I'm not gonna fix that that problem. Then you go to the surety and say, well, we are the the party that's insured here. We want somebody to pay for a contractor to make the improvements necessary. So we can't, we're not gonna discuss with John. I I think that the materiality of a maintenance bond, it's in the subdivision regulations. If you would choose or or Carol's department at some point to propose changes in those regulations, certainly you could do that. But you need to know that at least at this point, the regulation is there. And if you choose to find there's some mitigating circumstance to do something different in John's case, then that's up to you. But I I think you need to know it is a requirement.
I guess my biggest deal is on that maintenance bond is it's for the entire project. It's on a million three some dollars.
And how about?
You know, to whereas like, you know, at one point in time, Caleb had expressed, and I mean, I admit this is a past deal, but had expressed we would not go over five hundred thousand. Which the chances of you having a maintenance deal and having over five hundred thousand dollars on a project being done, I I mean, that's five thousand dollars. But on the entire. But, but on the entire amount, it's thirteen thousand and some dollars.
I think that, I think that, at least in my discussions with Carol, the contractor that put in the, the street, which I think is what we're talking about, is the, Carol, the, the maintenance bond.
All of the streets, the sewer-
Okay.
Everything.
Even if we have different subcontractors, are those subcontractors willing to provide a bond that covers the extent of all the improvements? Because we don't want to get into a situation where something that the sewer contractor did, that causes damage to the street, and we look to that bond, but we don't have the street contractor's bond, that's not acceptable to us. So, are you saying that the, all the public improvements, that-
You would have to have, what, the street, the sewer, the water, the curb and gutter, and everything collapse?
Just, just so that, the way I look at it, just so the city's protected, so that something happens to one of those public improvements, we are fully insured for the cost that we might-
But you're talking total collapse.
That we might-
I mean, I guess if-
Things happen. I've, I've seen them happen, and-
I guess a sinkhole. I guess that maybe that would, that could happen. But outside of that, I can't see how anything even close to that could happen. But, I mean, I, you know, I'm needing direction here, is what the deal is, because what, what's happened is, it's kind of changed from the first one to the second one, and now the third one. And the third one has been, it's, it's cost us a lot more money than what the original proposal was, just because the retention ponds, the deals, the, the stuff that was required on, in other areas and stuff like that. So, you know, I'm looking for directions here to where, when, when we look at a project, we can price out that project and know that that's what it's going to cost, but there seems, right now, there's too many variances. You know, and maybe you're not seeing them, but we are, because we know, we're the check, we, we know we're writing more checks than what these maintenance, these deals are happening, these RHIDs. And so, you know, so also, I'm, I mean, I, I mean, like I've said, it's, you know, you're thirteen thousand, five hundred dollars, you're not deals, but if you think that's going to collapse in the next year, I guess, I mean, I guess that's thirteen thousand, five hundred dollars, but I, but I think that there probably won't be anything left of Garden City if that happens. I'm just, you know, to me, if there's a maximum amount, five hundred thousand damages or something like that, or, or a certain percentage of that project to have it, forty percent, fifty percent, whatever, you know, I just, you know, I'm just looking for some guidance here on that, so, so that we know what, what we're looking at into the future, because that's, I mean, that's, that's just kind of coming from the entire family on that deal. But I, we'll do whatever you guys recommend. I mean, I'm not going to, we're not going to say, no, we're not doing that anymore, but, but we are needing guidance.
Any questions or comments? I do want to just upfront say thank you for being a contractor in Garden City, and I know you've done some incredible work here, and so I just, I do want to say thank you to you and your whole family. I know it's been, you've built a lot of quality homes and continue, so I really appreciate-
Thank you very much.
-I say that, so.
All right. Thank you.
Anything else, questions or comments?
Randy, I have a question on, as the difference between escrow and just the city holding in a fund that wasn't the general, I mean, I can fully appreciate the, hey, we're, you know, the city says, hey, give us that money and we'll do another improvement. We negotiate with people on development agreements that says, all right, it says you need to put eighty-five trees or whatever on this bit, but, you know, maybe if we can do, and we do parkland set aside and those types of things, it says, you know, you're supposed to set aside some land in your subdivision for parkland, but if we're doing a community park right next door, that cash value of that, put and invested into that community park meets the same purpose. So, we've worked with a lot of developments over time, we've worked with this one over time. The mutually agreed upon sidewalk extension trail into the city's trail network made it, made a lot of sense that having to circumnavigate that property with a five-foot sidewalk that very few people would use. I can see from their perspective to say, here, we're giving you this cash in lieu of, what if you don't do it? Aside from the fact that, once they pay that, they could receive that back on the RHID, whereas if we do put it in a holding account, we would have to negate that.
See, I think-
It would open up the possibility for a double payment. But, the, the idea of an escrow seems a little bit overkill. What's it take for two parties to do escrow? Do they have retained counsel to draft and review an escrow agreement, and is there an expense with holding those funds? As opposed to, we would have an agreement that could be executable, that would say we would hold those funds, and this, I mean, you, you all just approved a budget. We've got eighty-five funds with line items that hold money all the time at zero expense.
Yeah.
It would seem to be un, that the parties could, if that was the commission's wish and that was the developer's wish, we could hold that money and still afford them that protection they were looking for. But maybe it's worth it to go through the added expense of having an escrow account, but we just heard of an added expense that comparatively didn't seem very high.
Would they be able to, if they put it in an account, would they be able to then, on the RHID agreement, would they be able to get that dollars back? Or, you're saying that they don't get it?
I, I mean, I, I would guard against that.
Right.
But I guess the, my biggest deal is that, you know, the deal was forty thousand, the RHID was written for thirty-four, and we have to do some additional sidewalks in that addition now also. So, I mean, so, we won't get, you know, so, so I don't know exactly what was allowed for that sidewalk along there, but it could, had to be like about twenty-four, twenty-five thousand, not forty. You know, you see what my reasoning is there? I mean, the RHID is to pay back your deals well. If that sidewalk was not all in there, we're not going to get that back. You see, see what I'm saying?
No.
And what, what Bernard is doing, he's putting out the forty grand, you know, or, what they're doing, we'll put out the forty thousand, what, not thirty-four thousand, is that?
Yeah, let me, let me explain.
Okay, okay.
In the RHID, there is a budget, an eligible expense that the developer provides to the city at the beginning when it's developed. What John is saying, Mr. Chapel is saying, that their amount that they put in for sidewalks doesn't cover that sidewalk on Mary Street. It just covers the sidewalks that they were supposed to put in around the roundabout. So, that's what his concern is. We do have the option to amend the development agreement, amend those eligible costs, to make sure that he gets reimbursed for things, infrastructure that he did put in, that wasn't on there to begin with. So, that, that is another option to address that issue.
And back to Matt's question, escrow, just letting escrow as a third party that is going to hold funds so that one of the two or however many parties are involved can't access those funds absent compliance with an agreement. So, my experience with escrows, or a title company, or a financial institution, which I assume is going to want a fee for being the escrow every year through the period of time that the funds are there, there would be an escrow agreement that we would certainly want that escrow company to give us, or the developer could draft it. That would control how those funds would be distributed at some point. A little bit different than the city, if the money's paid to the city, the city has those funds, but it's still bound by how it can spend those funds, and I assume it could be put into an identifiable account that the developer could see each and every year, those funds are still there, and it could only be spent by the city in compliance with the agreement that we have. And if, if the chapels want some type of agreement that the city is going to put in, that, that sidewalk, walking trail within a certain period of time, that's a, that's a policy decision, then maybe you would direct us to looking at.
I don't think there would be a problem with that either, Randy. That, the, the only thing is, like, if you could do it with the RHID and those additional funds were put into that, then we're, basically, we're okay however it goes.
Yeah.
You know, it's, it's, it's kind of your decision on that. But it's, right now, we're looking at as an additional expense.
Carol, do you think, I mean, are the projections, based on what we know, or how we've seen the value of the homes, are they going to have, and I'm, I'm going to ma, I imagine that's going to develop out, I mean, it's already developed out good. Is that going to, is that going to generate more, more potential increment than there are expenses, or are there far more expenses than increment? Because if there's more expenses already than increment created, us telling them, well, hey, you can add that sidewalk to, the increase in sidewalk to your RHID budget, doesn't do them any good. But if there's more, if there's potentially more increment to grab for infrastructure costs that are more than they thought they were when they initially set out, then that would be a good thing for them to do.
Right. And looking at their feasibility analysis that's in the general, or that is in the development plan, their total expenses, or their estimates that they're going to get back based on their values that they've given the homes is one point five million. So, really, one point five seven four. So, and their infrastructure costs were around one point six. So, really, they're, they're off a little bit. However, in looking at the, the amount they've got for their housing, they've got two houses for four hundred and forty, so that's two twenty for each house. I think they're going to be able to get more than that for those houses out there. So, if-
So, it might be worth, and I, I bet if we looked back at phase one and phase two, it's outperforming their, their feasibility analysis.
Right.
Granted, it's a little bit of lewd and faith, John, and to say that that's going to be, you know, property values are going to hold, hold in that regard for fifteen years. But I would say it would be worth amending, amending that budget at some point in the future to be able to grab the additional sidewalk expense.
Yeah, I think the main concern for Bernard was that the RHID started, the fifteen year started a year and a half ago, so he feels like he's already behind, but-
And he's probably right in that regard.
But, they've already, like I said, this morning, I drove out there and there's already nine starts, and they're actually going up really fast, so that is a good sign for, for the feasibility analysis and getting that portion up.
They are a little more expensive houses than what we thought.
Yeah, so, so that might come back and help that.
Any other questions?
The quick question on the building the sidewalk on Mary Street, is that a sidewalk to somewhere to connect to, or is that a sidewalk to?
Well, that's why we did, that's, that was the purpose for this agreement, because we didn't, you know, the, we didn't see it was necessary for them to build a sidewalk to nowhere. However, we saw the value in a commute, in a neighborhood inside the city limits of Garden City-
Right.
-to be connected, so that foot traffic and bike traffic, that type of thing, would go. So, not knowing where that might be, or how we might arrange that, or how that might tie in, you know, to a Jenny Barker road improvement, or at one point in time, there was a bridge out, a bridge across the ditch out south on there, that there could be some options to create a trail and create connectivity. And what the development agreement that both parties agreed to, in addition to subdivision regulations and a budget and all that other stuff, was, hey, it's in both the development's best interest and the city's best interest to give us some flexibility, instead of just having you plant, plant a five-foot-
Right, yeah, I like that size.
-loop around the property. Let's hold this money so we can build, build something that's mutually beneficial.
As far as the subdivision regulations, I mean, I, I mean, if that's something that we want to look at in the future, I mean, I, amending them or subjugating them here, I mean, I think in, in a case by case, I think that's where I'm hesitant. And I appreciate, I mean, that you're, you're showing, and you know, that you are building homes in Garden City. I do like Matt's idea, the holding, you know, those dollars. I mean, I, I do think, you know, we would use those quicker than the ten years, I'm hoping, but I, and I think that we could develop an agreement and wouldn't have to spend additional dollars for an escrow, and I mean, that would be something, that would be amenable to me, I don't know. Any other comments from commissioners or questions while they're here, and then we So, I'll open for a motion. And I don't mind making a motion. I'm not sure, so, how, how that all needs to do, what that looks like. So, would that be?
I think, Mayor, if I might jump in, I think if the, if there's a motion around their two requests, the details of whatever it is, well, I mean, there wouldn't be detail, if, if you deny both requests, then details don't need to be worked out. If you approve one, or the other, or both, the details of that could get worked out in the amendment when it gets brought to the commission. So, the, you know, it would be helpful to have as much direction as we can, but we can, i- if, if one of those things, or both of those things, is something you want to do, we can work on the specifics of the language as, when we develop something for the next agenda, which would be the written agreement, or the written amendment to the original development agreement.
Correct, which I've already worked on.
Okay, that's helpful, yeah. Any comments or direction from the commission?
No, I just agree that at some point, we probably ought to look, and, I mean, it is pretty extreme on some of these issues for developments and stuff, so I'd like to maybe, in the future, develop some process on getting some of these things cleaned up, so.
Does that offer enough direction? I think the escrow, I mean, not the escrow account, but an account held by the city for that, that makes sense, that we can work on that as far as, or now?
Well, that's going to be done anyway.
Okay.
But if, but if you wanted some condition that, that if we don't complete the sidewalk in ten years, the money goes, assuming that they haven't already been paid for the sidewalk that, through the RHID.
I guess my concern is, I'm going back to, is it a sidewalk to somewhere, or is it a sidewalk to where it just abruptly ends? That's what I'm looking at. So, we have a ten-foot sidewalk out there, but will it connect? Is there going to be connectivity somehow, if that's what you're looking at?
I think all your sidewalks have to start somewhere. I mean-
Well, I get that, but they do, but I don't want it to stop where they can't, there's this end trail and it becomes this cattle trail to get to somewhere else. I want it to, if we're looking-
Well, that would be up to the commission to appropriate the money to that project.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I'm just-
And you're, and we're not ready to propose a design or a location at this meeting for that ten-foot project, or for that, that trail project. But the intent of the development of the agreement-
But the intent is-
-was to work, work towards that in the future, that we would, and, and their contribution would go towards that.
But I think, I think if you don't hold, make a holding place for those things, then what happens is that you build, you build without them and you don't have them anymore. I mean, I would have never imagined Pioneer Pathway to be developed and that, yeah, that's there, and it's, you know, a really great addition to the community. So, I mean, I think part of the planning is, is looking to the future and saying, these, especially something that's as well done as, you know, out there, I mean, I think that you could eventually, but I'm like, it, it will take a while, but.
Well, and that street's not a, are, is that an artillery street?
No, no. I, I can tell you that we do already have plans to put in a ten-foot sidewalk along Jenny Barker. The idea is to connect Chapel Heights to the, the, the new southeast part that's going in. So, that's, that's, but we don't have a connecting mechanism from the end of Jenny Barker over to Mary yet, but that's, that's the part that we're-
I make a motion, we deny the request drafting the second amendment to the Chapel Heights third edition agreement.
So, we have a motion. Do we have a second? I'll second that. So, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose?
Nay.
Four to one. Thank you for being here today.
Thank you.
Item twelve I, the governing body is asked to consider and approve the first half twenty twenty semi-annual report for the Community Development Block Grant Revolving Loan Fund on behalf of Great Plains Development Inc. Melinda? Okay, I'll take this, that's all right.
Sorry, Matt.
This is a semi-annual report, uh, uh, the Community Development Block Grant is a program that, uh, traditionally has been a revolving loan, uh, at-risk, uh, kind of high, at-risk or high-risk applicants who can't receive conventional financing, uh, can have their application reviewed by a, a local committee with a recommendation to get a loan through uh, the city's seat, uh, Community Development Block Grant Revolving Loan Funds. Great Plains Development, Inc., and Dodge City is the administrator of those C D B G revolving loan funds, and they will provide the governing body twice a year a report, usually presenting themselves, uh, once a year. Now, during the COVID deal, there was a, there was a, a relaxation of some of the criteria for that, and so there's certainly more, uh, more loans that have gone out of late. But that, uh, report is included in your packet, if you've got any, uh, questions on those, we can try to answer them. Other than, other than that, you're just simply receiving the report and there's no action necessary.
So we have a motion to receive the report?
Move that we approve the semi-annual report from the period ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty.
So we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
So Commissioner Euler seconds, have been moved and seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign, motion carries five to zero.
Item J, the governing body is asked to consider and approve relocating a crosswalk and installing a push-button pedestrian warning light system at Victor Ornell's Elementary School on Spruce Street. Andy?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. In, in May, the school system approached the city about moving a crosswalk to an area that's gonna better accommodate students and parents to get their, just the parents can get the children to and from the front of the school more quickly, but also in addition to that, restricting left-hand turns out of the west exit area at the school there in order to keep traffic flow moving. And, and a lot of this came about when the bypass project was going on, some, some changes had, had taken place. Police Department was there helping with things at that time, and they had noticed a few of the things that had changed during that time and helped with the traffic flow. And it would allow traffic to continue to move through the school drive. Matt, if you wanna go to the, the map, I think that'll help us as we walk through there. And it's also a long walk. If you look where the crosswalk is right now, that's a long walk. A lot of people park in the Garcia parking lot and then have to walk up and then walk over and walk their children all the way around that and up. And the proposal would be to move that crosswalk east. And at first, I'll just walk up here, I don't know. Yeah, let me have that.
Can I use the microphone?
Take the microphone? About knocked it off at the last minute. But, uh, I wanna move it here so parents can come through here, come across, and then the school system would put a sidewalk here. And then they would have, have a teacher or a crossing guard to help with the students coming through here, because the traffic flow still comes through here, but, and then so, so vehicles would be coming, but then we'd have the flashers that would, would stop the traffic and we'd have no parking on either side of both sides of the street for twenty feet on minimum on either side. And so also, one other thing that we would need to do is relocate this sidewalk. The Traffic Advisory Board didn't like the idea that somebody could be coming in and turn here. First off, we were talking about putting it here because there is an ADA ramp here, but it needs some work, but they didn't like the idea that people could be turning in with students standing there, so that, so the motion, uh, the Traffic Advisory Board was to move it over here toward the, to the edge of the property line for the city. And then we'd have ADA ramps on, on either side, and we'd install parking signs, no parking signs, excuse me, the, the pedestrian lights, and then a no-turning sign here. And this actually is, the, the paint is not as good, we would just abandon that and let it go and pull the sign down. There, I, I'm not sure if there's a sign there or not, but, and then reinstall this, this sidewalk here. And so this went to the Traffic Advisory Board, we actually talked about it in two different meetings. So last month, it came before them and then we went back and, and I spoke with, with John Geis, the Facilities Director, and he's here today if you have questions for him on this, spoke with him, spoke with the prin- uh, the Principal at Victor Ornell's as well. We had Adam Schart, Wilson and Co. got involved in this to talk about how the traffic flows and different things. So there's been some significant time and, and thought put into this. And so the agreement on this would, the, the school system would be paying for the materials. And then, this is typically how the city has handled, handled the traffic, the pedestrian sign in the past, that, that the entity that's requesting it, if approved, they pay for it, then the city takes over the maintenance and the city installs it. And so I also worked out with John that if we were to move the sidewalk, the school system would pay for the sidewalk, uh, materials, and since it's on city property and there's some ADA ramps there, I think it's in our interest that it's in the right of way on its city property, that our crews would be involved in installing it, so, so we have the control to put it in the way that it needs to go in. The sidewalk on their property, that would be for the school system to handle on their own. And so they would pay for all the materials of moving this and then we would take the maintenance from there.
I really like the solution, I think that's, I mean, I think it's really well done. With that, I wanna go ahead and move that we approve the request to relocate this crosswalk and sidewalk, install a push-button pedestrian warning light system and traffic signs, and restrict left-hand turns from the west drive before and after school. So I have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
So Commissioner Euler seconds, any further discussion or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Mayor and Commissioners, item twelve K, the governing body is asked to consider and approve the appointment of Bridget Clark to the Community Health Advisory Board. Sophia?
Good afternoon. Um, so Jessica King has submitted her resignation from the Community Health Advisory Board in June, and this leaves a vacant position that will expire in January of twenty twenty-one, January first. Um, at this time, Bridget Clark has submitted an application to serve on the board, and there are no other applicants at this time. So the alternatives are to approve Bridget Clark to the Community Health Advisory Board to complete the three-year term set to expire January first of twenty twenty-one, to appoint someone else to the board, or to not make an appointment and to continue soliciting interest in the board. Staff recommends appointing someone to the board.
Any questions? Do we have a motion?
Move that we approve Bridget Clark to the Community Health Advisory Board to complete the three-year term set to expire January first, twenty twenty-one.
So we have a, a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
So Commissioner Ortiz seconds, been moved and seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Sometimes with masks, it's hard to hear the ayes, so I'm sorry.
He just waved, raised my hand.
Just kinda give a wave.
Yeah, it, yeah, it blocks some of it sometimes there, coming through.
Item twelve L is, or, yeah, twelve L is the consent agenda. If there aren't any items that the commission wishes to pull off, the appropriate motion would be to approve consent agenda item L one through six.
I make a motion, we approve consent agenda, uh, twelve L one through six.
So it's been moved, do we have a second?
I'll second.
So it's been moved and seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries five to zero. Thank you so much.
Takes care of all the business items, we have, ready for Commissioner reports?
Thank you.
Yeah, it's great to, I go first.
Yeah, I know. Now be careful, because we'll have to do a lot of diddoing, so it's-
Uh-oh, okay, I'll check off a few things here. Uh, no, great to see the Downtown Vision, uh, receive their accreditation, you know, and also hear about the number of businesses going into downtown, even with, uh, the events we're experiencing over this, uh, last year. So it's great to see a vital downtown in Garden City. Uh, attended the farewell celebration at the big pool, it was hot, there was no water. Well, there was water, and there was, uh, there was, um, snow cones.
Fire truck, yeah.
Uh, yeah, the fire truck was there spraying water, but there were snow cones, so, but a, a great event, uh, to kind of close out, um, an era and start a new era anew, so. And as you saw, we're getting closer to, uh, getting a new and improved, uh, pool area. And, uh, last thing, and I know a number of the other Commissioners will probably, uh, remind everybody, but please fill out the census if you've not already done so, that is vitally important for our community. And that's all I've got.
Great. So Commissioner Ortiz?
Yeah, um, great presentations today, and I know a lot of those were hard decisions and things that we had to go through, but, um, we do appreciate all the hard work that goes into it. I was also at the big pool and I had my prop, nobody, nobody else brought any props, but it was a fun event.
You sure did.
Uh, yeah, the census, please fill out the census. Um, I did remember to do my taxes, so it was a good thing I reminded myself last time, so. Also, you know, I did talk a little bit just about some things with the, you know, development part of the, of this, you know, the process, so, um, I do think that this is a good time to bring up some of those, um, ways to help, you know, improve some of those areas, and, and I'm not saying that they're, uh, a, a bad thing, I just, I do, you know, with being in, in architecture, there's a lot of just gray areas, and I know, I've been working with Carol, uh, a few times on some projects myself, so it's just, it's one of those things that, you know, it, it, it just needs to be, I think it, you know, massaged a little bit, so, uh, but I, I am willing to, to help and, and offer my assistance in that with, with any way I can, so that was one of the reasons why, you know, getting on the commission here was, was, uh, good for me to, you know, give back. So, um, I also just like to thank, um, the police and the fire chief who get out there on Fourth of July and things, they, you know, they did a, a great job, they even came to my neighborhood, neck in the woods, and, and we were cleaned up before they got there, so.
That's good, I was gonna say, did you receive a?
You're a lot of the dots.
That's good. But thank you for everybody who has, uh, participated in, in, in the budget and everything and keeping our levy flat, so that's a good thing, so I think that's all I got.
Yeah, it's exciting to be able to know that the budget could stay flat. I mean, it's always so hard this time of year, especially with everything going on, to even be able to know that we could do that. I think that's pretty exciting. And, you know, kudos to all of the people who were responsible for putting that budget together, because that's tough, that's really hard, put those numbers together. It's exciting for Downtown Vision that their I W W program is as strong as it is, that, you know, they've been able to loan out twenty-six thousand dollars. That's just fantastic, you know, during this time. And I, you know, know how important those dollars are to downtown and revitalizing and, and, you know, how important it is to support all the businesses in Garden City. You know, if we have a strong downtown, we have a strong core, we have a strong city. Um, and also, early voting is open, and so, um, go out and vote if you aren't going to be here on the Tuesday, first Tuesday in August.
Great.
The one extra thing I'd add with the mill is, we're able to keep it flat without a reduction in services, because I know there's some communities that are, that are keeping it flat, but they're having to do it at a great reduction in services inside their cities, so, um, something good to point out to when-
Good point.
In conversations with people that I think we're actually having an increase in services and having a, a flat, uh, mill rate, which is good. I mean, everybody's talked about everything else, I just re-encourage everybody, and the research is coming in, the more we learn it, the more we understand how important masks are when you're in public, especially when you're shopping, when you have those close proximity, uh, to reduce COVID, that's the easiest, simplest, um, way we can do things right now and, and get over it, and right now in Fannie County. Um, it's been going pretty well, I've been out, when I've been out and looking, and then everybody's wearing, uh, face masks for the most part without a mandate, which is the, the, the way it should be. I mean, we should choose to do the right thing when we're out in the public, so that's all I have to say.
Thank you so much. So I know there's, there has been a lot covered, I do wanna just, uh, emphasize too, the budget, I think keeping the mill levy level, especially in this year, is really important. Um, and I know with, uh, with strained finances for a lot of, a lot of people, and then hopefully, like I said, I, as the city is doing a lot better as far as really keeping up on all of our parts and our promises. Uh, the big pool celebration was a lot of fun, it was hot. You know, it's a bittersweet time, if you didn't get a chunk, I, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry. Um, it's, it means, this means a lot to me, I did get a chunk of the pool with a sticker on it, and so, um, I'm excited about what's to come, and the, the pictures today and the, the illustrations were absolutely wonderful. Um, I do wanna congratulate Downtown Vision, um, on their acceptance, I thought one out of eight hundred and sixty, you know, and you think about how many downtowns there are across America, I have no idea, but, um, that they're accredited and they were one out of eight hundred, eight, eight hundred and sixty, they were accepted into this program, I think that's awesome. Advanced voting, I do wanna emphasize that, it is really, um, the processes are easy to do, and I know that, um, August fourth, you know, you, it's easy, you can get busy and sometimes miss, or if you're out of town, so this is a really great time to do that. I do wanna emphasize, um, I appreciate the Neighborhood and Development Services and their partnership with our local contractors and, and people doing anything through them, and, you know, that partnership is what makes Garden City work. I mean, we have an incredibly well-built city, um, you know, we, I've been in a couple of presentations, and people talk about the bones of our city, a lot of those bones are things we don't see, the water and the electric, you know, they're all, they're things we take for granted, but I'll tell you, it doesn't happen by accident, so the planning of the city has been incredible, but I, I really appreciate the partnerships that they work with contractors. The last thing I wanna mention is that, you know, I mean, I've heard a lot of people say, you know, well, and I've read some Facebook posts, where they talk about, well, that forty million dollar pool, and it's not forty million dollars. And I just wanna emphasize that, you know, we really set a budget and we're sticking to that budget, and I really appreciate that the McGowan and Company, their work to really keep us on budget and on tasks, and, so, I mean, there's gonna be exciting videos, I know a lot of the information that we was presented today will be on our Facebook and also on our website, so please check that out. Um, with that, just enjoy the rest of your day. Again, we don't get many cool July days, so this has been a nicer one today, so with that, we'll adjourn the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.